All right. Hello, everyone. It is 7:00 and I will call this meeting to order. We're going to change a little bit procedurally because of our city clerk is currently, that position is vacant, and so I will be taking over some of the roles during the meeting of city clerk. So first up is roll call. And by visual inspection, we are all here, so I think that is sufficient. Next is item two, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next normally is item three, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. However, because we are doing our Do the Right Thing presentation and we have a number of folks here for that, we're going to change the order a little bit, and so we will advance this portion of the meeting up. So this is item five B and C. And with that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Clovin.
Thank you, Mayor Juan. Can we hear you? Can you hear me? Awesome. So first of all, I want to acknowledge that this year, we have two new principals in our midst. We will get a chance to introduce Sarah Harris, who is now the new principal at Mount Diablo Elementary School, and Vicki, go ahead, you can clap for her, she deserves it. And Vicki Wilson, who is now the new principal at Diablo View Middle School. Now, the Do the Right Thing program was established in 2010 by Mayor Hank Strafford, who in combination with the Clayton Business Community Association and the local schools, put together an initiative that was passed unanimously by resolution, which basically enshrined characteristics which we are to recognize among our citizens, but also to try to teach our kids at our school. And those include integrity, responsibility, courage, kindness, self-discipline, and respect, and now inclusivity, inclusion. So every month or of the school year, we try to acknowledge a student that amplifies those character traits. So it's been fun to introduce this program to our new principals and for them to kind of get an understanding of what that is, so they can get the help from their teachers to find those students who amplify those characteristics. During the summer, for the months of May, June, July, the characteristic trait was for inclusion. And that hit the end of the school year last year, and the kids got out, and we get a chance to really acknowledge that trait then. And for the very beginning of school year, which is this year, which is very appropriate for those who are starting school, courage was a character trait which we chose. And so we spoke to the principals about that, they spoke with their teachers, and I'm going to introduce Sarah Harris. And she's going to come up and she's going to give the awards and talk about the three students she chose. Now, she actually chose these three students to receive both courage and inclusion awards. And I have certificates for each, and I'm going to stand up and you can come over into the microphone and you can talk about your students. And the plan in the future is for us to have the students actually be with us, so we can see your smiling faces, acknowledge you in person. COVID kind of took that away for us for a while, and we want to get back to really seeing your bright smiley faces and seeing what our future looks like. So here you go.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, I'll do. So thank you so much for having me this evening. It's been an amazing journey being the new principal at Mount Diablo Elementary. I have to say, I spent my entire career in high school, and this is a breath of fresh air. So I'm loving the campus, I'm loving the community, and I think it goes without saying, when I asked teachers if they could tell me students that have been showing courage and inclusivity since the start of the school year, it was a matter of minutes that I received emails back on these three amazing students that I'm going to recognize tonight. So the first student that I would like to recognize is Bryn Panza. Bryn, do you want to come up? You can stand with me. You can stand right here, I promise, you'll be okay. So Bryn is a happy, helpful student. She looks for ways to include all students in the classroom or at recess. She is truly a boss. She is willing to lead all students with a positive attitude. She takes on responsibility and does everything that she's told. Her helpful ways make all students feel cared for in and outside of the classroom. Bryn has the courage to reach out to students that may be shy or unsure of what to do. Bryn loves helping others, which makes her a great student to have at Mount Diablo Elementary. And that was from Mrs. Cross. Yay.
So Bryn, on behalf of the City of Clayton, I'd like to give you these two certificates, one for inclusion and one for courage, and thank you for your smiling face. And that's for you.
Next is Sofia Napolitano. Did I say it right? Okay, come on up. Sofia has truly demonstrated the spirit of courage and inclusivity so far this school year. She has done a remarkable job at stepping up and taking more of a leadership role along with her groupmates. Sofia demonstrates patience and understanding as she assists the students next to her while remaining engaged and keeping up with her assignments. Her can-do attitude is truly admirable and remarkable. She helps all those around her, she makes people feel included, and she truly represents the Eagle way. This is for Sofia.
Thank you, Sofia. This is for you, and we really appreciate you bringing those traits to your school. Thank you very much.
And then lastly, I don't think I see him, but last recognition is to Rob Griffith. Rob is a new student to Mount Diablo Elementary this year. This can be an adjustment for any student, but especially a fifth grader. Rob is already an amazing Eagle. He has a sense of humor that he's not afraid to share. He still works hard and is ready to learn. He helps out his classmates, he's respectful on the playground, which can be colorful sometimes. And we are so grateful to have Rob as part of our MDE community this year. So the last award is for Rob.
Rob, thank you very much. Your teacher has their certificate for you. And again, since this is kind of new for these principals, we appreciate them jumping in so quickly and learning the way. And with that, we're going to ask Vicki and your teacher to come up, because we have, she has four names that she has chosen, and I'll let you talk about each one of them. It's going to be recorded, and you can give them the certificate. I'll give you a link that you can share with their families, so they can see that you're talking about them.
I would just like to echo exactly what Ms. Harris said. The Mount Diablo Middle School community has been amazing welcoming me onto the campus. I have enjoyed my time so far getting to know the family and the kids and the staff. So a huge thank you to everybody on that. With that being said, I'm going to ask Mrs. Grover to help me, because she nominated some of the kids. So next month, I promise, we'll bring kids with us, just because I kind of goofed a little bit. But we're going to make sure that they know that they are to come next month, and we're going to make them see, you know, let them be able to see the thing on the video, you know. So thank you. So first, we have Radha Tawari. She is being recognized for courage, and she was recognized by Mrs. Bruington for overcoming obstacles, always being present, and faces difficulties with such a can-do positive And then I'm going to let Mrs. Grover do this one, because she did.
All right, so I nominated Isabella. She's an eighth grader, and I nominated her for courage, because she's facing some new challenges at the moment, and I think that the way that she's handling them really shows a lot of maturity and grace, and just really admire the way she is conducting herself with everything that she's having to kind of deal with at the moment. So, yeah.
We're just tag taming all over the place. And the next one we're going to recognize is Cicely Lamachia. Cicely was recognized by Mrs. Ridenhour, and she says Cicely isn't afraid to participate in class discussions, even if she isn't sure if she has the correct answer. She also had the courage to join our new Dungeons and Dragons Club, even though she's the only girl in the entire club. And then we have Kyle Nathan, who is getting the award for inclusion. He was nominated by Mrs. Winkley. And she states that Kyle is really patient and works hard to be kind to students. He's always such a good sport in class.
And this must be Giovanni Castaneda. I nominated him for inclusion. He kind of stood out right away in class as somebody who looked for other people that might need to be included in things. Like, it was a very specific example. We had a group project, and he, by the luck of the draw, got put with a whole group of his friends. And at the same time, we had a student who was absent at that draw, and so when that person, that other person came back into the classroom, she needed a partner, and he so willingly just jumped on leaving his friend group to make her feel included. And I thought that was pretty remarkable for the beginning of the year, seventh grade boy to do. So, yeah.
Thank you both so much. I just wanted to acknowledge both principals and the students that received awards. Thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay the rest of this meeting, or you can go home and get some dinner and do your homework. The next meeting will be, next month will be in October, and we'll talk about the character trait responsibility. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Not judging at all. All right, well, that concludes items five B and five C. We will return back to the regular order and go back to item number three. Item number three is Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. If anyone has a comment that is not on the agenda, now is your time. I do have two speaker cards. I believe it's for this item. One indicates this item and the other doesn't, but I'm going to make the assumption that it is for this item. So if anyone else has comments, feel free to fill out a speaker card. So first up, we have Mr. Hayden.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I want to start off with by asking if the council actually adopted a council policy that I believe was under discussion, and that's to restrict use of the cell phones during the council meetings because of the distraction it creates and possible Brown Act violations as well. So if the council did adopt that, just ask that you enforce it. And if they haven't, I strongly encourage you to look at that and to consider adopting that as a policy. It just makes it easier for the audience to make sure that the council members are participating in all the discussions and what's going on in front of them. So appreciate that. Next up, I do want to revisit the special event fee issue that was passed at the last meeting. And it was positioned as an effort by the City Council for a cost recovery effort to ensure that the Clayton taxpayers are not subsidizing large events in the city. And yet, the staff report that was attached to that discussion did indicate, and it was confirmed by the staff at the meeting, that all of the city's services are going to be, all the costs for those services will be recovered under the new master services agreement. So we really focused in on this new special event fee as something above and beyond just recovering cost, because those costs have been recovered with the new master fee schedule that was adopted. So I question the continued reference to the cost recovery as the basis for the special event fee, and ask you again to look at communities in the vicinity. Benicia has an Oktoberfest that is sponsored by their downtown merchants association. Walnut Creek also has an Oktoberfest, and it's also sponsored by their town-town business association. Both of those associations obviously are behind those events and put on those events to encourage the additional promotion for their downtown businesses. The events here in Clayton are different, and they're quite unusual. No other city that even the consultant was able to look at puts on events like this by a nonprofit charity and donates all of the money generated back into the community. So it's a much different focus, and there is great excitement in our community for those events. And adding the proposed fee of $10,000 a day that was previously not required will eat into the funds that are then donated back to our community and really encourage the council to rethink both the amount and if you still feel it's justified, which I ask you to look at other communities and to review how those funds are used and other opportunities that the council has. I ask you to consider reducing that fee from the $10,000. That would again reduce the monies available. And all of that money, as you were already told, go back into all of our charities here in town. They support the museum and lots of the nonprofits here. So it's money that is spread among our community, and I encourage you to encourage those events to be held here, not discourage them by charging them for this fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Matthew. One second. Hively, sorry. We don't have a timer, but typically we have three minutes, so we'll, yeah. No problem. If there's a red light, it's on. I can't see it from here.
You have to push the button. Okay, now the red light's on. Okay. Yes, so my name's Matthew Hively. I live at 1858 Yolanda. I bought a property here in Clayton just a little over a year ago, so I'm a relatively new resident here. I have essentially just a question and a suggestion. I'll start with the suggestion first. So as a new resident and an eco-conscious citizen, I'm always trying to do the right thing in terms of dealing with trash and recycling things. And the companies that accept various recycling materials generally don't make it very easy to figure out where to take things. So I would like to request that the city take a little bit of its resources and use some of its contacts with the larger community and with higher levels of government to maintain a list of where various non-curb-side recycling materials can be disposed of properly. Things like styrofoam or larger pieces of metal or, you know, anything that, anything that's not curbside, basically. I know that Clayton has a pretty good website with all kinds of helpful links to, you know, how to sign up for water service, how to sign up for trash service and whatnot, so this would just be an extra little helpful thing to maintain on the website, if that's possible. If it's not, then it's not, but that's my, that's my request at the moment. The other thing is, on a similar vein, I know that Clayton's contract with Republic Services in the green bin doesn't accept food waste currently, at least that's what Republic has told me. So I'm curious, is there any timetable or movement towards accepting food waste in the green bin like Concord does? Thank you.
Just briefly, I would say the answer to your second question is yes. It's coming when we implement the latest version of the Republic Services Agreement. I believe it's in January that will start rolling out throughout the city. And then to your next item, I would say, I would ask staff to refer to some of the resources available at Republic Service that does have some instruction on some of the items you have referenced, but probably not all, but I do think that there is some information. And if we don't have it on our website now, then we can talk about how we could put it, place it there more easily available.
Yeah, so Republic Services doesn't generally seem to provide very much useful stuff, like, you know, you can schedule a pickup for like large items that get taken to the dump or whatever, but, you know, that's not what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
I'm trying to make sure it doesn't end up in the dump. That's my highest priority.
Okay. No, that's good, and I take your point, and I think that's something that we could work with staff on, on how to do. Thank you. Any other comment on non-agenda items from anyone in the room? All right. I'm going to move to, yeah, oh, am I doing this or are you doing that?
I'll do this. I'll do it.
I can do it too, if you want.
That's okay.
All right. Feel free.
I want to do it. CW, as I momentarily promote you to panelist, please unmute your microphone. You'll have three minutes to address the council.
Okay. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm CW Wolf, former Clayton mayor and current president of the CBCA. And first, I want to thank the mayor, the council, the city manager and staff for putting on a great mayor's conference in Clayton, which I was very happy to attend. It was great seeing many former Clayton mayors there and also colleagues as well. All right, next, the CBCA wishes to congratulate Howard Geller for his 16 years as the creator, producer, and promoter of the Concerts in the Grove series. Howard's accomplishments as a city leader and innovator will forever be etched into Clayton's history. We wish him well in his retirement. At our last meeting, the CBCA granted donation requests of $1,000 to the Diablo View Middle School Drama Club and another $500 to the school's leadership class. Another donation of $4,100 went to the CBCHS basketball teams for a new piece of training equipment, and we also granted $1,000 to the CBCHS robotics team to help with entry into their competitions. The members of that team are Eric Catalano, Will Gallagher, Santi Martinez, Alex Meilov, and Asher Wan. In their first competition in Dublin, they finished right in the middle of the pack, 14 out of 29 teams, and their next competition takes place this Saturday in East Palo Alto. Wish them the best of luck. Finally, the CBCA is bringing back our Oktoberfest to beautiful downtown Clayton on September 30th and October 1st, beginning at 11:00 a.m. both days, with a carnival preview night on Friday, September 29th. Discounted ride tickets are available at Ed's Mudville Grill, Skip Alini's Pizza, and Here's the Place. We are still in need of volunteers to help with various positions. You don't need to be a CBCA member to volunteer and to have some fun giving back to your community. So for more information on CBCA or to sign up to volunteer, please go to our website at www.claytonca.org.
Thank you. We do not see any other data, are we? All right. With that then, I will close Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items and move on to item four, the Consent Calendar. Is there any item that anyone would like to pull from consent? All right. Then I will open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none. Would anyone care to make a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll second you.
Excellent. I think the mic, both of your mics appear to be doing something different, but Councilmember Clovin moved approval, Councilmember Trupiano second, and I will call the roll. Right? Perfect. All right. Councilmember Clovin.
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman. His is not either. Councilmember Trupiano.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz.
Yes. These aren't working.
And I vote yes as well. Apparently, mine is the only one that works.
Keep the microphone handy.
Okay, excellent. That is, that concludes the consent calendar. Next is Recognitions and Presentations, item 5A. This is information only, and this is to recognize National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, and Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, September 17th. We've already done items five B and five C, so next I will move on to item six. This is reports from city manager and staff. Mr. City Manager, does your mic work?
Mine does not.
Would you like a handheld mic?
How would I do that? Hold on.
Oh, yes.
The button.
I'm back.
Are you back? Yeah, I'm back.
Yes. Are you back?
I have nothing to report, except that it is my 14-year wedding anniversary with my wife Jaclyn, and she is blessed to have me deal with these most, most of our wedding anniversary years. So, you know, love her and thank her for that, but other than that, nothing else to report.
Did you want to make a, actually, no, that's on the other section. Okay, well, congratulations. Next is item seven, Public Hearings. We have none, and item eight is Action Items. First up is the approval and authorization for the city manager to sign a agreement with HDL for business license administrative services. Would you like to kick us off?
Thank you, Mayor. I will introduce Ian Davis, the head of compliance from HDL, who is here to do a presentation. Before he starts, I'll just give kind of a brief overview. You know, as part of staff's continued review of improving efficiency and sustainability in a lot of the services we provide to the community, both externally and a lot of stuff we do internally, we are trying to find ways to essentially get back some staff hours as best we can and do it in ways that aren't too expensive moving forward and are sustainable over the long haul. I have had success in a variety of avenues, working with HDL throughout other cities and counties, specifically with their sales tax, property tax, business license, and cannabis. And so as staff and I were looking at ways to improve efficiency and gain some time back, this was an area that we felt we could implement rather quickly because of my history working with HDL and my knowledge of their expertise and the professionalism that they work with, and our ability to gain back the code enforcement hours that we would gain by doing such a transition. So essentially, what Ian will be talking about today is we will be outsourcing our business license program, which is now done internally by staff. As it noted in the staff report, we will gain a $4,000 expense, as we no longer will need our business license software that we pay for, because HDL will handle, effectively start to finish. So if you were to apply, if you have questions about business licenses, if renewal notices, delinquency notices, that'll all be handled through HDL in the future. Additionally, what we gain back is about 300 hours a year in code enforcement time for our code enforcement officer, which, for illustrative purposes, is about $13,000 a year in dollars, even though we don't gain those back from a dollar and cents perspective, but to give you a sense of the value of that that comes back to the city and our ability to more actively pursue code enforcement without having, again, resources pulled in multiple directions. The other two things I'll mention is eventually, over time, HDL will work on a discovery program, which is essentially where they look for non-compliant delinquent businesses. My success in other agencies, when that program was implemented, and usually we do it about once a year, they usually gain back as much revenue as the contractor paying itself. And for us, it's about 17, almost $18,000 a year for HDL to take over this service. And so that is really a big benefit. They also do it in a way that is much more informative to the customer, much more, I'll say, soft-handed, but with the expectation of accountability, and they really have good success. And so I'm excited to bring them on, hopefully as a partner here. And the final piece I'll mention before I let Ian go through his presentation is really the sustainability of doing this regardless of who's in the seat. And not that I have any desire for any of our staff to transition, but what I've noticed historically in Clayton is the staff turnover has happened, it's been hard to be consistent with process. And having HDL do this service means as a customer, you'll get the same process regardless of who is in my seat or the staff member seat that handled it typically, or any, anybody in between. And for this type of service to
I have been in HDL Companies for about nine years now and handling business taxes for around 120 clients throughout the state of California. We are now nationwide as well, so just a little background on my, my history specifically with HDL and local government. Is the presentation gonna be on there? Awesome. I will have a presentation for you, and it will look cool, I promise.
I have seen it. It is awesome. Give it just a moment.
That's what we're going for. Yeah.
There's a lot of anticipation.
Yeah. Well, hopefully I'll deliver. Awesome. So yes, again, Ian Davis, compliance manager, just pick it up from the top. This presentation is just gonna go over the type of business tax solutions that we can have for you. HDL as a whole obviously handles a lot of different services throughout the state of California, but very specifically, when it comes to business licensing, our goal is to create a, basically equity throughout the city, revenue generation, and also ease of process and seamless transition between in-city staff to obviously a third-party handling the day-to-day operations. So if you can move to the next slide, please. Basic agenda, it's gonna be super, I'm gonna try to be as quick as possible with this, because I don't want to waste too much of your guys' time, but I'm gonna go over kind of just how I, how I've kind of presented your story as I've spoken with Brett, and then some of the goals that I imagine that the city is gonna have and how we can kind of help with that. And then we'll go over quickly how the HDL team is centered, and then also what our services are to provide, so if you can go to the next slide as well. So, in the city, you have about 1,100 licenses that are available to you. In this, obviously, as Brett was mentioning earlier, there is a focus on retention and recruitment. This is something that is, you know, just really consistent throughout city government in general. It's not a problem that specifically that you guys have. Retention in general is just hard. People move from city to city, people retire, people move out of the government sector. So it's really important for us to help you guys with that retention and help you guys with that consistent message that can be done through the city of Clayton. Obviously, there's also a financial demand and a financial aspect that there will be sometimes, that the demands are gonna outlive the resources. For an example, as you, as you just heard me say, you have 1,100 licenses in the city. However, there's probably about somewhere, we've already done an initial review, about somewhere about 2,000 to 2,200 businesses that are actively operating within the city of Clayton. So you have this demand to make sure that people are paying the equitable tax, which is another phrase that I mentioned earlier, making sure everyone's registered, make sure everyone's paying the same fair share that everyone else is, and that no one's kind of getting away with, with moving on. Along with that, we obviously also want to handle your past, present, and future when it comes to your municipal code. A lot of things have changed as far as state regulations and federal regulations. It's been about 30 or 40 years since you guys have updated your business tax code. That makes it difficult if you're just reading letter of the law and not understanding what you're up to date on legislative action has been on the state and federal level. A lot of things can get swept under the rug and not really thought about. We're up to date on all that. We're actually usually even just in the state legislator, having conversations with these people, getting involved on a day-to-day level, trying to make sure that we're staying up to date on all those proper procedures, so that you guys never get in trouble for anything in specific that might have to do with the business license processing, improper taxation, improper levying of a tax, things of that nature, so we provide that as a benefit. And then again, as I mentioned, there's a degree of compliance that we really focus on, that I know that this is just something that you guys currently at the moment, and this is not, again, something specific to the city of Clayton, it's really specific to any city, there is a degree of non-compliance that exists within the city. If you can move to the next slide, please. Again, your goal's really easy, really simple, increase revenue, decrease cost and time. So as Brett was mentioning, there's 300 hours of code compliance that you're going to be saving. There is a lot of great work that code enforcement should be doing. The last of it should be processing a business license return that takes, you know, just a bunch of busy work and doesn't actually provide the city with as much value as the code enforcement officer should be able to do. If people are breaking some sort of code, or if people are not following the proper procedures, I mean, especially, I mean, we just heard something being talked about special events, it's really important to make sure everything is being done correctly and there's proper enforcement, so there's nothing that, unfortunately, for an example, a fire hydrant is like not within a specific area, there's like very specific things that obviously code enforcement can help with that are really important on a community, community development level. We also like to, obviously, the city would like to expand customer service options, so you already have access to an online web portal, but our goal would be to also update the infrastructure, update the way the customer experience as far as the day-to-day operation, making it easier to apply, making it easier to take a payment over the phone and to process everything, just so that it's all in one suite. We'll also work with city staff to make sure that the proper approvals are moving forward and everything like that. So upgrading a lot of just the day-to-day operation will be part of what we're gonna be trying to fix. Again, staffing capacity, I can't say enough, this is obviously something that is really important, and then also managing the future. So being able to trust HDL like other, others of our clients have, and make sure that there's a future that you guys can trust in as well, that there's, this business license program's gonna be handled efficiently, it's gonna be handled by a team of people who know what they're doing and have experience, and other local governments knows what the other local governments are doing to keep you up to date with the modernization of how this is always constantly evolving and constantly changing. Next slide, please. So again, like I mentioned, I would go over what our team does for our other clients. So HDL as a whole has existence, existed for a little over 40 years now. We just had our 40th anniversary, I believe, six months ago, not up to date on current history for HDL, unfortunately. But our headquarters is in Brea, California, down south in Orange County. We have 700 clients nationwide when you're talking about all of our suite of services, so business tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, cannabis tax, pretty much anything that has tax in the name that is handled by a local government, HDL handles. We have, like I said, 700 clients nationwide. The scale of that is that we're collecting and increasing revenue at a scale of about $200 million annually in the state of California alone. This is done through a variety of methods, this is done through allocation, through sales tax, this is done through the business tax programs of doing compliance, as Brett mentioned earlier, getting people registered, getting new revenue into the city, into the general fund. And then also, along with all this, there's a little bit of bragging rights that we have a 99.6% client retention rate. So once someone gets addicted to us, they stay with us, and there's not a many ti, there's not many times in which that we lose a client. The 0.4% that's on there was due to the COVID relief money, when cities got flushed with cash, they let, a couple of our clients let us go, because of the ARPA funds. However, we love to hear that most of our clients stay with us, and it's because, again, we work really hard to have that redefined process, a updated and constant communication with your own community, giving you guys access to your community in a way that maybe you didn't have before. That's really our mission and our, our job. Next slide, please. So the first service I want to talk about is the Operations Management Service. This is the kind of keynote service, this is the service where we're dealing with the applications, we're dealing with the renewals, we're dealing with the delinquency follow-ups, we're dealing with the mailing out of letters, everything. It's the turnkey solution, it's, we do absolutely everything for the city. This comes along with some of our updated technology, as I mentioned earlier, this comes along with an online business support center, that comes with, you know, updated new look and feel, it looks a little bit more advanced. Some of these things are just gonna include emails, it's gonna include a chat function that we're currently working on and currently updating. It's may, eventually, potentially, this is not super close, but we're working on AI and functionality as well, so that there's, again, more movement towards the future when it comes to that. And then obviously, we have a phone line that we constantly are updating as far as updating the language of the taxpayers and the support center. So basically, what I mean by that is that we're constantly updating the way that we talk to customers and the way that we talk to these people, because we're always focused on customer service. Monitoring, like I mentioned, legislation and compliance, we have a specific arm of our company that specifically manages this type of, this type of work, like I mentioned, they're in Sacramento, talking to people, making sure that we're up to date on these laws, because we're responsible for all these studies nationwide, we need to really make sure that we're always up to date on that. And then enriched quality, it's supposed to say data and reporting. What we mean by that is that we buy data at a very consistent level. So we're buying, you know, Google data, Yelp data, all these things to make sure that we have a very clear picture of what the city is supposed to look like. This is, like, we try to create a database, which we call our business warehouse, which will have a vast majority of whatever business activity is constantly coming into the city of Clayton. Gives us this idea of what's going on in the city, gives us a clear picture of what's going on, and allows us to be able to communicate to council, communicate to city staff, what's going on in your city, so you have a better picture of that. It's not just 1,100 business licenses, it's also 1,100 living, breathing people that are operating on a day-to-day basis. We try to treat them as such by gathering as much information so we can tell a story that you guys would like to hear. Next slide, please. This is the secondary service of our, of our agreement, this is gonna be the compliance service, I've touched on it a little bit, but the focus is to identify these unregistered businesses that I mentioned. We get them into compliance by notifying them, educating them on the business tax law and procedures. The honest truth is, is that most of the businesses that are operating without a license operate without a license, not because they're trying to dodge taxes, but because they're just ignorant that there is a business license requirement. It's not something that is normally actually advertised on a day-to-day basis, it's not something that people know about. There are certain aspects of things, like, for an example, renting a property, that people just completely forget about. These types of activities, we try to capture, educate, really hand-hold through the process of like, hey, yeah, no, we understand, you didn't under, you didn't know there was a business license requirement, here's the steps on how you get it taken care of, really just want to help you get into the registry so that you don't have to worry about this moving forward. But our goal is to help educate, create equity in the city, and create a sense of understanding throughout the community. Another thing, we validate filings, we collect on outstanding liability, so obviously, there's a revenue gain aspect to this, and we also try to monitor those revenues and try to monitor trends as time goes along. Obviously, that information was super important during COVID, because trends were wavy when it came to business license revenue, because gross receipts were down. There is a lot of recovery now, it's just a little bit of a sneak peek on, on what our trends would look like, there is a business license recovery. That can only happen, though, if there is insured compliance. You can't have consistent recovery without there being in some sort of aspect and management of the compliance program. So that is the compliance program as a whole, and I believe this is the last slide, but if you can go to the next one. Questions?
Excellent. Questions from council? Councilmember Clovin.
So I was curious, you mentioned that there are 1,100 business licenses currently, annually, for Clayton?
Correct.
And you have done some analysis that indicate as many as 2,000 might be necessary in Clayton?
Correct.
Curiosity, that delta of 900, what does that look like? I'm just kind of curious in how you identified that. Is that somebody basically selling multi-level marketing out of their home, or is it just somebody who's renting and rental? What does that delta of 900 look like?
It depends.
I mean, we get our data from a variety of resources. I like to split them into two categories, I have it be the governmental category and also the private category. Governmental category is consistent of property tax data, sales tax data, Secretary of State data, things that just show business activity on a government level that you've already registered for in separate places. And then there's the private databases, which we get from, like I mentioned, like, we scrape data off the internet, right? So Yelp data, Google data, and these types of things that we actually purchase on a day-to-day basis. The answer to your question, more specifically, the delta is varieties of businesses. So it can be some of the businesses you're talking about where people are just operating from their home, but it does scale up all the way to sometimes even like a McDonald's or just a random restaurant, just doesn't have a business license because no one told them, they weren't aware. Most of those businesses are operating on a corporate level, not every city has a business license or has a business tax, not every county does, not every state does, not, so it's just, things get left by the wayside. I would say normally, in my experience, it's usually mid-sized to larger businesses that are unlicensed. Most small businesses that are operating out of their home, when they file for a seller's permit, when they file for a Secretary of State filing, and when they file for all these things, are told upfront that they should be filing for a business license in their local jurisdiction, and normally, when they have those things, or when they go get a bank account for the first time, they're required to get these business licenses. So more often than not, small businesses are actually registered at a higher rate than medium and large-sized businesses who don't have to worry about a lot of those nuances that local businesses have to worry about.
And to add to that, in my previous city, we had more delinquent businesses than we did actual registered businesses. So it's not uncommon that the numbers are as big as you're feeling or seeing, potentially, that, that is what we experienced in my last agency as well.
And the business license fees, are they based on annual revenue, are they based on number of employees? What is, what is, what does the fee structure look like? Just out of curiosity?
Yeah, it is based on gross receipts, so that is like just annual revenue before taxes or deductions. However, the business tax for a local city government is extremely low comparatively to what you would normally expect out of like a sales tax or a income tax. Those taxes are, you know, 9%, 20%, so on and so forth. Business taxes usually around, I think in this city specifically, is about 1% of 1% of your actual revenue. So it's a very, very small number, but it is an important number nonetheless to the city for, obviously, annual growth of your revenue, because it goes straight into the general fund.
I'll hold questions till discussion.
Councilmember Trupiano.
Thank you, Ian. So I have a couple of follow-up questions. One is kind of follow-up to Councilmember Clovin, how do you reach those businesses that do not have a business license? I know how you identify them, but how do you communicate with them?
So we do a variety of methods. So usually, we start with a notice via post-mail that kind of has an explanation associated with it, along with an application to help them get into compliance as soon as possible. With Brett in our last city, we also did like an amnesty program where there was a little bit of an allowance, and we tried to give them a period of time to pay without penalties. Alongside that, though, as far as the communications, we also have email data, phone data, so we'll call businesses, we'll email them, try to have these conversations over the phone, because a really, again, our goal is to make sure that people are educated. More often than not, it's because they didn't know, they weren't aware, it just wasn't on the, you know, peak of their radar. So we try to have that sort of empathy along with these taxpayers and understand that it's a mistake that happens, and we try to just get them on board.
Ian, I, just a couple of more questions. So do you know how much we're generating right now in revenue from the 1,100 that do have business licenses?
I do not know that number off the top of my head. I don't know if Brett, if you have that information?
I'd have to double-check that. Yeah, I'm not sure. I can get back to you, Councilmember.
But we could almost double it if we, you know, I mean, that's hopeful, whatever that number is. The other thing is, I do have a business license for my business, and there was a process, and I cannot remember what we called it here in our city, but where the, your community had to be polled, your neighbors around you, to make sure that they were okay with you operating your business from home. So will you take care of that piece of it also?
So we don't take care of that piece specifically, right, but we assist the department that does handle that type of activity, that's usually like a home occupation permit is like the process that you have to go through for that. That's in line with your business license, usually, it like comes along when you're first starting up your business. So we'll help manage that process as far as communicating with the business what the requirements are, communicating with the business of who they're supposed to contact, when they're supposed to contact it. But our, like, main responsibility and only technical responsibility is going to be around the business licensing process, but we'll manage it and also make it ease of access for the taxpayer to be able to communicate with the other departments.
Okay. So will we still be handling that part of it as a city? Okay, yes.
Yeah, community development will still work with HDL on that piece of it.
Okay. And the other thing that a city manager, Brett and I, talked about earlier today, so I think it was a previous budget and audit committee meeting where our previous finance director said that we had maybe 30% of those 1,100 that were But we could almost double it if we, you know, I mean, that's hopeful, whatever that number is. The other thing is, I do have a business license for my business, and there was a process, and I cannot remember what we called it here in our city, but where your community had to be polled, your neighbors around you, to make sure that they were okay with you operating your business from home. So will you take care of that piece of it also?
So we don't take care of that piece specifically, right? But we assist the department that does handle that type of activity. That's usually, like, a home occupation permit is, like, the process that you have to go through for that. That's in line with your business license, usually. It, like, comes along when you're first starting up your business. So we'll help manage that process, as far as communicating with the business what the requirements are, communicating with the business of who they're supposed to contact, when they're supposed to contact it. But our, like, main responsibility and only technical responsibility is going to be around the business licensing process. But we'll manage it and also make it ease of access for the taxpayer to be able to communicate with the other departments.
Okay. So will we still be handling that part of it as a city? Okay, yes.
Yeah, community development will still work with HDL on that piece of it.
Okay. And the other thing that a city manager, Brett and I, talked about earlier today, so I think it was a previous budget and audit committee meeting, where our previous finance director said that we had maybe 30% of those 1,100 that were delinquent. So you're going to be doing collections also, correct? And there is a fee for that. Is it 35%?
I believe it's 25%.
Oh, 25.
Yeah, and it's specifically just on whatever the contingency is, right? So that number is, so just to make sure I'm adding on to, like, a little color to that, the, because it's a contingency fee, it's only based on when we collect revenue for the city. Along with that, there's a lot of free work that's done. There may be 300 or 400 businesses that are delinquent. More often than not, it's a bunch of businesses who moved out of the city but never told the city. So there's a lot of cleanup work that HDL is going to basically be tasked with, so that you do have a clearer picture of what's going on in the city.
Great. Thank you, Ian. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. Since we don't know what the revenue produced by the current business license base, how do we know that the fee your firm is charging us is higher or lower than that number?
So we have a general promise, that I can say right off the bat, is that we generate, we promise that we'll generate at least 10% of the city's business license revenue on a yearly basis. Normally, that covers the fee. Off the top of my head, like I said, I don't have the actual revenue number. However, I can say that, given the fact and the status of the compliance rate in the city of Clayton at the moment, I can almost guarantee that there will not be an issue of covering the fees.
Also, this, in your chart on page two, you talk about some of the cost savings, I guess, that the city's going to reap, if you read this. This current business license software, is that a one-time savings?
It's technically a yearly, annual fee. Every year, it's a one-time savings.
It's going to be a $4,000 savings every year?
Correct.
And the other question is, staff hours, that's going to produce a savings of $11,000-plus?
So as I mentioned in my, Councilmember, my original comments, that was just an illustrative number to show the value of that 300 hours to us for code enforcement, if we were to place a value on it.
So it's not solid?
No, that's what I said. It's not, well, it's not that it's not solid. I said, that's not money we're receiving back, but it provides a value to the amount of hours of code enforcement work we would be...
Since this is going to be an ongoing agreement, right? Unless we decide to cancel it.
Correct.
There's going to be an ongoing payment to HDL, annually worth approximately $18,700. How do we know, what benefit are we going to get in the outer years? Help me understand that.
So you're talking, just, I want to make sure I'm getting clear on the question. You're saying that, like, 10 years down the line, we've done the compliance, we've gotten everyone registered, and everything's all hunky-dory, and now we're moving into the phase where there's only costs associated with it? Or are you asking, how is revenue being generated, like, during?
No, I want to see if it's going to be a benefit over time.
Well, so, again, the promise for HDL specifically, as far as revenue generation is concerned, and how we offset the costs that come along with it, one is that you always have the time savings that Brett mentioned a moment ago. And then, also, you will have consistent compliance work, which is going to just generally, over time, like I mentioned, 10% is the promise that HDL gives. I believe in the city of Benicia, we did a 30% increase over the first four months or five months of the program. So the goal would be, on an annual basis, just to raise revenue by 10%. That is also going to be with more consistency, because we do also have a staff of people who do collections efforts and these things that are being thrown to the wayside. So right now, your business license revenue, again, for maybe, just for argument's sake, let's say it's at $100,000.
So I have the number. The business license revenue, on average, is about $160,000 a year, so this is less than 10%, give or take.
Yeah, I think it represents approximately 3.5% of general fund revenue.
When is this proposed to begin? Start date?
So we would, if approved, we'd sign the agreement. Ian and I would work on a kickoff process. We'd work, finance director would take over the project with Ian's team, and, you know, they would work. I would assume it's probably 30 to 45 days of just getting everything up to speed and process, and then we would look at, depending on the timing of the renewals for certain customers, they would then begin that process. We would work on a communication campaign with HDL to let the community know that this transition's occurring over that timeframe. We'd put, you know, in my newsletter, social media as well. We'd be sending out notices to the current businesses of the new approach. So we would have a whole plan in place for...
Let me get to my question then.
Okay.
When does it start? When does it end for the first year? So that we will be triggered at some point, 12 months after the beginning, to say, it's time to review this? Or is this going to be going on and on and on, and we're going to forget about it?
Well, the intent, again, is that this moves from staff doing it to them on an ongoing basis. Business license renewals vary depending on the customer, so it's an ongoing basis of us essentially moving staff work to HDL. So it is ongoing, it's consistent, as I talked about in my opening remarks, and that the customers know that that is the new arm of the city that they'll be going to, to deal with any of their business license transactions.
Just to clarify, I think the nature of the question is more like, when will it launch? And when will the evaluation period, like, when's a good time to do an evaluation period to assess the efficacy of the launch? I think that's kind of what you're asking.
Yeah, because I want to know when this first term ends, and will we be flagged and saying, oh, it's time to renew and look at this contract 12 months from, whatever that date is. I'm assuming it's a 12-month increment.
So the intention is, again, that we'll probably launch to the public in 45 days or so. I think we'll work with Ian's firm on exactly when that is and communicate that to the community. The idea is that my team will be reviewing it, you know, throughout the process to see and ensure that we're getting the value. There isn't a trigger in the contract, because they're essentially being staff augmented, so they'll continue to do their work, and we'll work with them. And as long as we're getting value from staff's perspective, they'll continue to do it until we deem it wouldn't be otherwise, and then would, obviously, we would turn if that issue arose. But as Ian mentioned, their firm has been doing this for a long time for many customers with near, almost 100% customer retention, because they, you know, typically, and especially in my experience, have provided the value that we've talked about today.
I'm looking for some reassurance here, that we're going to want to review it, or at least be keyed to review it 12 months, to see if it's brought the benefits that is so, that's been told us. That's all.
Can I add one piece of context that might help? So as part of the agreement, in section seven, it describes the initial term is 12 months with an automatic renewal of an additional 12 months.
Automatic renewal?
Yes, and it continues to renew essentially along those terms. There's termination provisions with various notice requirements, but it is an automatic renewal, 12 months. But I think more pertinent is an ask that we get feedback at a certain, in some cadence, just so that we can get comfort that it's performing as we would expect.
And that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. So.
No, my questions were already covered in the prior questions that council have asked.
I do have a few questions. Is, so currently, I believe, in the city's current portal, I've used it, it works. Are you, so, I wasn't clear when you described it. Is HDL taking over the portal?
Correct.
Or is it going to use ours, and you're going to support it on the backend? It's going to be your portal?
It's going to be our portal.
Okay, got it. So your website?
Correct.
Hosted service?
Correct.
Okay, great. There's a, it looks like there's a cost per record? Is that, so, we're going to, it's the license fee plus a unit cost per record that's executed? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
So it's a per-processed account, right? So basically, what that means is that when we send renewal forms, and we get payments, and we process the account to its, like, nth degree, right?
Yeah.
It gets, you get charged that amount. But there's no extra billing. The seven, like, I think, I believe it's $17 an account, is charged across the board, and it just, it covers the entire service as a whole.
Okay. Because the 17 per 1,100 records is like 19-ish, 18.7? Is that the license fee that was in the staff report, or is that in addition?
So the license fee was the former $4,000 we paid for the license fee, and that's why it was going away, because that's no longer happening, and we would just have, as outlined in staff report, the almost $19,000, based on the current business license number, or $17 and change per fee, per license, per to HDL.
Okay, so the, just to clarify, because I just want to make sure I understand, because the number is exactly the same, so I'm not sure if it's coincidence or not. The 18.7 that's in the staff report, the estimated annual cost of new agreement, is that the $17 per record?
Yes.
Or is there something? So that's it?
That's a 17.
Okay, got it. Okay. Because I wasn't sure if there's an additional charge for that? Okay, great. What is, in the agreement, it doesn't talk about any exit procedures over data? How, what happens with data when you exit?
We hand everything over to you. And we put ourselves under the same confines of your confidentiality agreements, that you have, obviously, just internally within the city's municipal code. So once the, if the contract ever is terminated, we hand over everything. We hand you also over our notes, so not just your own data, but we also hand you over our data.
Okay.
Associated with your...
That's not included in the terms of the contract? Is that something that we can describe? Typically, when you talk about these hosted service agreements, you have exit procedures, so that everyone knows what's going to happen? I think that, is that something that we can add? I know this is probably your standard contract.
This is our standard contract, but I'm sure that's something that we can get added.
Yeah, it would, it would be, I think, prudent to have something that describes or talks about that.
Yeah.
And you're seeing it more and more with hosted services, because you need a way to leave at some point.
Yes.
That'd be great. And then, the agreement talks about two funding models. Can you describe them, and have we selected one? Has staff recommending one of the two?
Context, to which, when you say funding models, you mean?
Hold on, let me. It's in item number, sorry, it's in item number six, towards the end of the agreement. On the PDF, it's, of the agenda, it's page 70 of 81. It says, just pay and processing services, either taxpayer-funded model or client-funded model, as directed by the client. We are the client, so I'm wondering if staff has a recommendation on that? And if you could describe them, that would be helpful, I think, for the...
Yeah, so that's for, like, convenience fee models, for your credit card processing, right? So we have a specific vendor that we use, their name is FIS, they're the ones that handle our payment processing. We either can pass on the credit card fees to the taxpayer and make it so that the city has no incurred cost, but if the city chooses that they would like to absorb that cost, it's like a benefit to the taxpayer, that's the client-funded model. But I don't believe that's been decided. That's normally decided during the onboarding process.
Okay.
And we typically pass those fees on here as a matter of practice, but, you know, if council has a different desire, we're happy to move in a different direction.
Okay, sounds good. That is the extent of my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We're going to take public comment on this item. If anyone has any public comment on this, now is the time. Seeing none, feel free.
Very brief remarks. Ed Miller, 590 Mountell. Thank you very much for hearing me. I had read some comments, I believe, on social media over the year, from two different business owners who had just said that they had kind of been blindsided, or maybe felt like they'd gotten lost a little bit in the process this year. So it does sound kind of nice to have a company that's focused specifically on the task and whatnot. Maybe that'll have a little bit more quality to the process, and maybe their website will be, offer more features and whatnot than our current portal, so that could be nice. The other thing I was thinking is, if you were talking about a time for review, sure, I think you have an annual review in January or February. You normally start looking at budget stuff for the, for the mid-year or something like that, so it might be a good thing to just sort of stick a thermometer in there, or I guess you guys are wanting a readout on it. These guys are obviously going to be monitoring it as in-flight from the beginning, but that might be a good point to take the temperature. And that's all I really wanted to say. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. One comment, I believe, on, online?
Larry, I will momentarily promote you to panelist. If you could please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to address the council.
Mr. Scholman, I believe we're waiting to promote you to panelist.
He declined to be promoted to panelist.
There we go. If you could unmute your mic, that would be great. I could use a couple degrees cooler. Okay, so I think we may be having some trouble here. And... All right, well, with that, I think we'll move on. If there's any other, I don't see any other public comment, apologies, Mr. Scholman, will, not sure where the issue is, but hopefully, it's on your end and not ours. Okay. I will close public comment and bring this back for discussion. Any comments from council?
As a small business owner who's had a business license in Clayton, I got to say the last couple of years has been kind of ugly with regard to our process. I paid my business license fee last year in 2022, and the next thing I knew is, in April of 2023, I got a delinquent notice from the city. Never got a notice saying it was due, and there were some substantial delinquency fees on top of what would be the normal fees, and I never received the notice the first time. So being a good council member, I went ahead and paid the fees, just because I didn't want to create precedence for others. But our process, due to turnover of staff, has been incredibly burdensome on our small business owners. And when I have questioned the staff historically about how those fees were calculated, is it based on revenue? Is it based on number of employees? Is it based, I've got a myriad of different answers. My business is such that I have employees working in other cities. Revenue is generated in other cities, and it was, I got very different answers from different people, and it was convoluted. As a council member, I wanted to pay the fees that were necessary, but it was not easy to understand. So anything that could make small businesses like mine understand how those fees are calculated, and give incredibly reasonable notices and not delinquencies, would be of value to me as a business owner in town. The 1,100 that exist, and honestly, the 900 that don't even know that they may need a business license. So I'm excited about the process, the prospect of this. We can't trust this to our current staff with the heavy burden of workload they already have. This would make it right and better for us from a standpoint of collections in general and this process for small businesses at a whole.
Other comments? That's what it is.
I just want to be assured that we will get the total revenue from our business license population in a timely manner. And secondly, that we will have the opportunity to review the benefits of this program, I don't know when, six months, 12 months, whatever is reasonable.
Yeah, I concur with everything that was just said. I think it's, I think it's imperative to make sure that we get a cleaned-up list, as you said, sooner rather than later, so that we know what the real number is between 1,100 and 2,000. And then, to Councilmember Clovin's point, making sure, and to Mr. Miller's point, making sure that they're not penalized, and really understanding how come, and how, I would like to know if it's possible, how long they've been in business without the license here, if that's something that you're able to produce for us as well, when you come back with the data that the vice mayor asked for. Thanks.
Okay. I would, the only comment I would make is, I do think the exit provisions are a prudent thing to have in the agreement. So I would ask that you refer back to your company and get some language that they're okay with, and then append it to the agreement. okay with, and then append it to the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve... Let me see. The approval of an authorization for the city manager to sign an agreement with HDL companies for business license administrative services with the caveat that the mayor just asked for to include the exit information.
Second. Okay, I will call the roll. Councilmember Cloven?
Aye.
Councilmember Tullman?
Aye.
Councilmember Trupiano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you for the presentation, and that concludes item 8A. Next is item 8B. This is approval of city-sponsored special events policy. Mr. City Manager, if you could kick us off?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So, what we're attempting to do tonight, as you had in your packet, is the draft city-sponsored special event policy. To make it clear for the public, this is related to special events that the city will be sponsoring, separate from the special event policy that will most likely be coming in November related to the master fee schedule, which are two very different things. This policy tonight is really going to focus on events that your council feels like they want to put the city sponsorship behind. We have, I think, sort of formally and informally done this in a variety of ways in the past and for certain events, as we had council discussion a few months ago on clarification on this process. So, staff is bringing forward a policy to provide some framework around that. What we're really trying to achieve from the policy is, one, a broad set of kind of criteria or objectives that council can decide to use or not in order to kind of identify what would qualify as a city-sponsored special event. The second is, what is the process for reviewing on an annual basis the events that council has decided are city-sponsored, as far as maintaining those events, adding to those events, removing items potentially of council desires for city-sponsored special events? The third is a financial threshold, as we kind of outlined in the policy. It's a little bit of a starting point for us. We talk about in the policy that number being 1% of the general funds appropriation. You know, historically, I think there's been a little variation on the total cost of the events as a whole. It also will depend on the amount of events that your council ultimately decides, but we think it's a good framework and starting point as far as creating a little financial accountability around the events. The fourth piece, the policy is trying to outline, is how basically council will be updated on the progress of city-sponsored special events, whether that is a quarterly update is outlined in the policy to council as a whole, whether council would rather have a subcommittee for city-sponsored special events that that information would go to, someone or budget audit. Again, that's up to council's discretion. It kind of leaves it in both directions within the policy for the council to make the decision. And then, finally, what typically would happen when we review this is we would already have the events outlined and bring them back, but because this is the first time with the policy, that exhibit is essentially blank for your council to decide tonight, the events themselves and the priority of those events. The priority of the events is important because as we kind of move through that financial threshold and go through the process, we will want to make sure that we can fund all of these events at that threshold before we were to kind of exhaust the list and then have like a partial funding of event, which would not be good for the city to support. I think tonight, a couple key components are, again, one, that 1% threshold is, you know, approximately $60,000 in round numbers per year. As we outlined in the policy, that doesn't include revenue that would be received. For example, if Concerts in the Grove was chosen as a city-sponsored special event, you know, if that generates between donations and sponsorships, for sake of example, $50,000, and the cost to implement it is $50,000, that doesn't have an impact on that 1% or $60,000 threshold that we're talking about because it doesn't actually eat into it at all. And that could be for any event that would also get additional sponsorships or donations. It would essentially help offset or allow for more cost to run the events. The next biggest piece that is different than what we've done in the past is, staff is recommending a different approach that really limits staff hours as we continue to talk about from the HDL component with adding staff capacity. Staff really doesn't have the hours to put on any of these events that you might choose moving forward. I think it's been difficult in years past, but as I kind of evaluate the organization, there are many fundamental and foundational things on day-to-day operations that haven't happened in lieu of, I think, some support of some of these other items, many being in the past, some of these events. And so, it's important, from staff's perspective, that we look to creating a process, once council approves the policy, that we will look to doing an RFP for two things. One, potentially a concert promoter that would deal with the Concerts in the Grove, if that is chosen as a city-sponsored special event. And then, a second RFP that would handle essentially every other event, and that would be, I'll, in layman's terms, say, an event planner, but it could be something slightly different or similar. But in essence, a person to manage the events for city staff and handle all of the logistics and ordering and communication and everything related to those events in the future. We do realize that does add a different cost structure, but I will say, looking at the history, again, it ultimately depends on what events you choose, but looking at the history of the events that I assume may make the list, Concerts in the Grove, even with a promoter, probably is generally close to self-sustaining, especially if we look at different ways of generating different donations in the future. And the other events probably don't trigger near the $60,000 number. And so, we think that would be sufficient, at least in year one, to see in doing this a different way and a sustainable way. Not that council members in the past and present haven't stepped up to do this work, but there is a concern from staff. If a council member were to not do it, as historically done, it kind of dies on the vine because we don't have a way to pivot as staff, and we don't have a way to pick up the work and the amount of hours needed to actually move these events forward. Much like HDL, this would be a sustainable model, regardless of who sits in the chair, again, that can be brought forward year after year so the community can have the benefit of these events and not worry about turnover or change in volunteerism levels, we'll call it, citywide. So, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I have some.
Councilmember Tullman?
Yeah, so, it's a... I don't even know if you're the right person to ask this question for, but as we're starting to create the list of the activities that we'd like to be on this list, do we have an idea of how much staff time was used? So, I'm just going to use, as an example, the Concerts in the Grove. So, given this summer concert series, do we know how much staff time and hours were used for that? I'm just curious to get a gauge on...
Yeah, I would say concerts, limited.
Okay.
But primarily because Councilmember Diaz and Trupiano handled a lot of the logistics, I'll call it, in various forms. And so, again, my concern is nothing to do with Councilmember Trupiano or Diaz, but if time moves on and that isn't upheld by a council member, that's a big gap that would be significant, probably in the hundreds of hours, as I'm going to look to the council members to deal with related to those events. I would say the other events is where staff time gets more used. So, 4th of July, Sandy Johnson in the Police Department, our former city clerk, you know, I would have to look to Sandy, but I would say it's probably close to 100 hours she's spending, all the logistics and review and meetings and time and day-of. If you were to add any other events, whether it be Memorial Day or any other thing like that, I think, you know, logistics coordination, communication, advertising, you're still talking, you know, even in a small event like Memorial Day, probably 10 to 30 hours, right? And if you look at that for any type of event like that, I think you're just adding on a similar amount, if not more. And so, you know, when you look at 4th of July and you add all these things up, you start to get not quite a half a FTE, but that's a pretty good amount for a staff that, in my perspective, doesn't have bandwidth to do any of it already. And so, that is where, when I talk about not sustainable, that is really where I'm putting the emphasis, is that, you know, we can't do it internally, and we need to look at a different way of handling it in the future. Does that answer your question, council member?
Yes, no, that's super helpful. Thank you, especially for the hours piece, because I didn't realize... I knew that the 4th of July one took a lot of time. I wasn't sure about the others. What about the... You asked me the question, and I had the next one ready to ask you. Give me a sec. You answered the one about the hours. I had it on the tip of my tongue to ask until you asked if that answered my question. I'll come back to it in a second.
Other questions from council?
Well, oh, go ahead. There's somebody else. Okay. Did you remember?
Not yet.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, if you do, jump in. So, one of the... Our city manager and I have been talking about this, maybe a little ad nauseam, for the last several weeks, but one of the things that I felt like might have been a little bit more helpful this evening was, and I know we don't have all the numbers, but sort of, kind of where you're going, Councilmember Tullman, how many hours, how much in sponsorship revenue, how much in donations? I know most of Concerts in the Grove were wrapping up early next week. We'll have a final ledger and then a final wrap-up meeting, but it... For me, it would have been helpful to have a little bit more detail, a little more backup, particularly on like 4th of July parade. I know we're guessing on the hours. Was there sponsorship? I think there was some sponsorship. And so, I guess that was more of a comment than really a question. And I'm assuming tonight, then, we're just going to talk about the events that are most and we think are most important to this community, based on the criteria we've been presented or any other criteria that we think is important, and then prioritize them, correct?
Yeah, that framework would be valuable, and then staff, once it has that list, will essentially go out and perform the RFPs. I have an assumption of what I think that universe will provide back, and I do... That's where I think I'm fairly confident that the $60,000 net number is going to be sufficient, unless you guys come up with 10 or 12 events, then I might have to change that. But barring what I think you may consider city-sponsored special events, I think that'll hold true. We would go do the RFP. Those contracts, depending on the amount, would either come back or not come back to council if they're above my authority. But if we were in this framework of dollars, we would just continue on, and then we would continue to work with that vendor or vendors, depending on whom achieved the RFP results, to essentially work through the new process, coordinating with certain council members that I think, like yourself, council member, that have had a big part in concerts, on what needs to be in their agreement and what they have to do moving forward, and ironing out all of those kind of devils in the details to move this to a kind of a new sustainable model in the future.
Thank you.
From firsthand experience on working with the Concerts in the Grove for 16 years, let me say this. First of all, the majority of the labor is volunteer. The only time the staff gets involved is the preparation of the agreement between the performers and the issuing of the checks. Now, I don't think that takes 100 hours, if that's your estimate.
No, I said there was very little for concerts.
Pardon me?
I said there was very little hours for staff for concerts. I was referring to 4th of July when I said it's probably about 100 hours between the two staff members.
And I can tell you, have you given any thought to what comes under that besides the concerts and the 4th of July?
So, again, that's where I'm looking to council to provide the list of events that you would like to have under that, and that is really your purview to make the decision on what you feel are city-sponsored special events. I'm just giving historical context for some of the larger ones I know we've done year after year in the city.
Okay, because I've got a list, and I'm not sure we're going to... I don't think we ought to fine-tune them tonight unless you think we need to fine-tune them. Because I think this whole process needs a little more thought and work done before we bring it to a vote. I will say this, that it strikes me that the committee, the oversight committee set up for the concerts was pretty effective. Things got done, contracts got issued, money got raised, and minimal staff time was involved. There are a couple of other things that, in talking to people that are primarily a city-sponsored event, the 4th of July you mentioned, the Memorial Day service, the car shows that we put on annually, those require even less time than the concerts, and possibly Clayton cleans up. But those are just things I've talked to people and what they view as a city event. So, and also, I want to be sure that we insulate the staff people that are involved in these matters are free from intimidation from the administration.
I have no idea what context you're...
I'll talk to you about that privately, all right? Thank you.
Okay. Any... Did you recall your question?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm still a little perplexed on the last comment, but I think it would help if we all got a little bit of color on what intimidation is occurring, but we don't have to talk about that here.
Well, let me just make a blanket comment. As a city manager and the way I run my team, I don't appreciate the blanket accusation in public without context or anything coming forward, and so, I want that on the record.
I don't think you want to go into that tonight. Because I think you and I need to have a one-on-one discussion on that, and I'll be happy to lay out the whole program for you and let you know specifically what took place and what happened.
Let's have one person talking at a time. I think that'd be better.
So, my comment is, I don't appreciate the public accusation with nothing behind it.
Thank you, that's noted.
I don't appreciate intrusion of the city administration on the volunteers.
Did you want to ask your question?
Brett, I mean, city manager, Prebola, you don't have to respond. I'm just going to make a statement. You are accurate that you do not deserve what just now happened to you, and it's an up, and I am embarrassed that that just now happened. So, I do hope that the two of you, because I know you've been trying to do it for over two months, can have a conversation to take care of that, but this is unacceptable in this arena. Okay, so my other questions were, whether or not, if there is a promoter that is hired or an... I know an RFP is going to go out. Is the intent, then, that staff would still be cutting checks, that we would... Everything would still be through our accounts? Would everything go through the promoter? Or how does that work?
Yeah, that's a great comment. So, you can do it a variety of ways. We would still maintain financial control. The idea would be that if we did an RFP for a promoter, that we would make it as comprehensive as possible for them to help promote the event for us, help us, obviously, secure the bands that would be playing, help us manage the day-of processes and all the planning in between, sound, all the things that may be needed to actually put on the event related to having bands here, you know, essentially what Mr. Geller did for 16 years, right? We would pivot from that. There are a lot of organizations that would do that, so I think we'd have good response from the RFP. We then would... We'd articulate that in very detail in their contract, and then would look to council and/or subcommittee to help more on thinking about sponsorships or how we achieve donations, potentially in an easier way. I know we've passed the jug for many years, but there could be some more creative ideas that actually could generate more revenue and potentially put Clayton residents in a little bit of better benefit for the concerts. I think there are a lot of ideas that Councilmember Trupiano and I have actually talked about in private that I think could come forward in conversations, that because staff wouldn't be worrying about it and council members wouldn't be worrying about it, we could focus on these other areas that could actually be revenue-positive and Claytonian-positive, I guess I would say, to the event itself, is how we were looking specifically at the concerts and a promoter and the context of what we would do.
You answered... The other question that I had was whether or not there would still be committees overseeing it.
It's absolutely council's discretion, so you could have... You could change the Concerts in the Grove to be a blanket special event committee that could oversee it, that we could report to on a consistent basis, quarterly or otherwise, or, as I say in the policy, we could come back to the broad council and do the same thing if that would rather be the desire.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. I don't have questions at this time, but I will open this item up for public comment. Anyone has public comment on this item, now is the time. Anyone has public comment on this item, now's the time. Seeing none, anyone online? I know that's quick, so I'll give a moment. All right, seeing none, then I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. I would say I do, I do believe that, a couple of things. I think that determining a list of events is a good idea, and we should probably do that, and we could probably do that fairly easily. I'm not a fan of the way that some of the policy components were written. I think, you know, typically I would expect, you know, council could provide guidelines or broad strokes of ideas around policy, and then staff could come back. And so here it looks like the majority of the policy was presented already written. And so there's several areas here that I think need to be, or I would like to see addressed. And so I think what I would like to do then is determine a list of events. We can do the prioritization. I think we have some suggestions or ideas of ways that we can modify. And I do like the idea of, rather than doing wordsmithing here, which is harder to see, and I usually use much bigger screens to do that, we can push this down to a subcommittee, and then they could work through some of the finer details, and then come, and then work with staff as well on what that could look like. And subcommittee could do that, and then we could bring it back to council for further discussion. But when it comes to events, I think you had a, you were going down a list of events, and I think that's good. The one area that I was not clear on was Memorial Day. I think the Memorial Day ceremony typically has been done by the VFW, and I wouldn't suggest that we take it, that the city takes it from them. I don't think that's a great idea, but I do think that if we want to provide a venue to them to do the event, like as a recognized thing, I think that would be great. So not necessarily, I don't know if that fits within this city-sponsored event, but I do want to make it easier for the VFW to do their event. So we could probably work through that in subcommittee with staff on the best way to make arrangements with the VFW. They would have to, they'd have to be on board as well. So I don't think we could decide that unilaterally. But, you know, concerts, I think is great. You guys did a fabulous job, along with Mr. Geller's last year, so that's fantastic. I do think transition, I mean, it's a, it's a big enough series that it essentially can stand on its own with all the work and support that you guys do. So I do think that it could withstand to have a role there, like you're describing. But the other events, I think, we need to flesh out a little more in policy. So that'd be my suggestion. So, I don't know. Anyone else have thoughts?
The only thing that I'm thinking about in, in terms of the VFW is the, the new street closure fee, or whatever we're calling it now. If it's not a city-sponsored event, what are we going to do so that they are not incurring that cost? Because I think it's a bit ridiculous for them to have to. And so I think that we need to consider that. I agree, we shouldn't take it from them, but even partnering with them in some way so that it is a city-sponsored event, to me, makes sense. Either that, or you need to waive it, because I don't, I don't feel that they should be paying that fee.
Yeah, I concur.
So what do we think we should do about that?
I think we should have a subcommittee, and then they can talk with the VFW and ask them what they want, and then we could accommodate whatever they want.
And haven't we always shared in that planning process with them? I thought that we had, right?
Typically.
I don't think anything would change.
No, I think, I think it just formalizes what has been done. So I think that'd be good. I would like to have them involved in that discussion, because it's, you know, their event, and it would be, it would be good for them to take the point on that, and then we could support what they need.
So we're already talking about concerts in the Grove, Memorial Day, Fourth of July Parade. I guess we'll have to determine if this is on everybody's list. I also wanted to put in my two cents again for Clayton celebrates 60 years, which is next year.
It's a one-year.
It's a one-off.
One-off?
It's a one-off.
Not gonna do that every year?
It's gonna be on there one year, and then wait till '75. I kind of had car show. I did have Memorial Day ceremony, 'cause I assumed we shared, and I had Clayton Cleans Up, and 9/11, Day of Service, which I thoroughly enjoyed participating in. And then the only other thing I had on my list, couple of things, holiday decor. I know that the CBCA leads the drive on that, but I think the city does some assistance, which is hanging decorations and...
Yeah, my conversations with the president of CBCA was that they typically do the majority of that. I mean, we may provide some support from maintenance, but it's primarily been them with, I mean, I'd say auxiliary support from us, but I don't think it's much. Yeah.
Anybody else?
My only thoughts is regarding Clayton Cleans Up and Clayton Day of Service, since I've put that on for the last couple, this year, is that there really isn't any cost to the city on that. I mean, there isn't, there's no, there's no real hours, there's no insurance or liability on that. So it's not, we're meeting in the courtyard, but then we just go out and do it. So it's, is it necessary to make that a city-sponsored event? Probably not. There are sponsors that come in to pay for the t-shirts and the barbecue. That makes it completely neutral cost-wise. And as far as Clayton Day of Service has happened, it's people just putting in their own sweat equity, wherever the projects are designed by the people who give out projects. So it's not necessarily, not necessary to make those city-sponsored events, because there is no cost really to them.
Well, and is the criteria cost, though? I guess that's maybe where I need some clarity. I thought the criteria was community engagement, well, I mean, we have a whole list of things, right? It's not just cost, right? It is, hang on. Criteria, the event in its very nature will bring significant number of community members together to celebrate and enjoy what the event is hosting. Event embraces inclusivity in the Clayton community and do the right thing. Provides a forum for community members that would otherwise not get together in such a public setting, creating a place to continue to explore common interests. And the event celebrates significant people or events in our city, state, or country's history, so, but...
Yeah, I don't know if cost is a controlling factor. I mean, I think it could, it's whatever we want, essentially. And I think if you're comfortable in how it's been going the past two events...
You know what? If for some reason I'm...
You could do one every month.
That would be some effort. And at this point, it doesn't appear to be something that would be necessary to be a city-sponsored event in my take. I've got it down pretty, pretty clear what needs to happen. But just like Jim's car shows, if for some reason...
The Clayton car shows. Excuse me.
If for some reason that I couldn't, I was in capacity in some way, or had to move for some reason unexpectedly, who would take that over? It's the same question with, with, with the car shows. It's like, okay, Jim has a system of how he does things. If he weren't there, how would that go forward? And this is, kind of goes to the whole point of bringing in a concierge, an RFP for somebody to, to take on this. So we have procedures in case we're not doing this anymore. I think, I think that's what this whole policy is about, is that we're like relying on you and me to do these individual events we take on as our prep projects, and if for some reason we can't, who's gonna pick it up if we don't? And I applaud you and Jim and Howard and Julie, but you, you particularly for how hard you guys worked on it. But you worked your tuckuses off this, this year, and I acknowledge that, for not only the sponsorships, but for every concert. Is that sustainable? And is that something we should require of a, a, a city council member to take on a prep project and to be doing a huge volunteer event every year or every, every weekend? I mean, is, is that some, I think that this policy is about is bringing in somebody or an entity to really run these for us if we can keep it the cost within, within reason. And I think that there's some value to that, and I appreciate the thought process. Even the policy questions could be ironed out, but I like, I like the thought process behind it.
So from the list, concerts, parade, car show, are we adding anything other than, those are the ones that are extant right now? Well, that's currently not, so I think that's the question. Like, I, that one to me seems kind of a wobbler, and I would, I would want to engage the VFW before we take any action on that. Were there others? You felt that those were, that you're all set for those?
I'm good for now.
So that's fine? If that changes, then it could change.
The policy gets, I think we're reading it annually anyways, so, and, and looking at how it works, so...
Okay. So, so I, so there's three candidates, for sure? Any others that we're thinking of right now?
Well, I'm just gonna throw it out.
Wait, sorry, the 60-year, I think.
And the 60th, thank you.
Sorry, my bad.
I, I, I'm just gonna throw it out there, because if you're gonna look at these criteria, which you just wrote off so eloquently, thank you very much, why wouldn't Clayton Pride Parade be something that would be a city-sponsored event?
It could be.
Just throwing it out there. It, it's, it fits all the criteria which you just said. It's promoted by volunteers and has a, a donation base which breaks the, break even. Why couldn't it be a city-sponsored event?
Well, they have a...
I have that on my handwritten list. So, yeah, I didn't know if we were getting there.
Well, I think that'd be similar, similar to VFW. Like, I know that Pride has its own structure. If they are interested as a body, then I think that's something that we should entertain, like...
Yeah, this is just looking at the criteria as, as you've stated it. These are all, you know, inclusive and it's important.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't, I know that you're involved in, to a, to a large degree, so I don't know if you speak for the organization, or you wanna, like, if you would confer with the rest and, and come back, that'd be fine.
I would say that, I would do the same thing that the VFW is doing, and have the subcommittee speak to the Pride Board. Even though I'm heavily involved and on the board, I don't want to speak for them now. I think first glance, it'd probably be like, well, no, we want to know a little bit more and have this fleshed out first before a decision was made, so I think having a conversation with the subcommittee would be...
Yeah, I think that's a good idea also, actually, because it, it fits, and I think that could be a good add, so... So, yeah, so I would say, directionally, that, you know, we say for sure concerts, parade, car show. We need to have further conversation with some of the, I'll just characterize it as a wobbler, that can go either way, and then form a subcommittee. Now, the concert committee currently is, is you two. That's gonna, that theoretically could end at the end of this concert series, right? It's gonna have a natural end, at least this go-around.
We plan on having one more meeting when we have the final numbers.
Okay, so after that, we'd probably, is expected to be the last meeting of the concert committee?
Correct.
For this calendar year? Okay?
Yes.
And then we, you know, I think that if we form a new subcommittee to kind of work through some policy, work through those conversations, work with staff, flesh out some details, and then we can bring it back when it's, when we shore, after we shore it up a little bit, I think that'd be good, so...
I have a quick question before you do that. Just to clarify, is the intent then that, I think I heard this, for council and for staff to get out of actually doing all the man-hours for any of these events? Is that right? Or do, does this group want to continue doing what you did this year?
I think it could be a mix.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if it's set. I think, you know, the, the level of effort, I would say was high. Fair?
Let's just use concert as an example. Sponsorships, I love selling them, marketing, advertising. Now, now that I've done it once, also, it will be a lot easier next year. But we do, city manager Brett and I have some ideas. Not that we don't appreciate the community's donations at the concerts in the Grove, but it is very labor-intensive to do that, but, and we've got some ideas that we'll flesh out with the committee, if I'm on the committee, to maybe even increase our revenue.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the idea of sustainability and being able to support something is good, so we just gotta figure out how we're gonna do that. Of all the events that we're talking about, I actually think they have mechanisms to be self-sustaining. The parade is probably the most challenging, because it's one-time in nature and it does take quite a bit of time. I think I met with the internal team many, many times, actually, to go over planning. So that was, I, I am aware that that takes quite a bit of time for them to do. Sandy did it a lot, and so did our former city clerk. Sandy had done it for several years, and she was really good at it. She is really good at it. But when, if someone were to do that net new, I think they would, it would be a little bit more difficult, so... So, yeah, so I, I think, like, definitely, I, you know, with your experience on concerts, I like that. It's something that I, I am interested in policy, so I would, you know, I would like to do that as well. I don't know if you want to do the administrative stuff or stuff like that, but that's, that's kind of what my thoughts were on that for a subcommittee, and then we could...
I missed that. Can you repeat that? I'm sorry. That was confusing.
Sure. So I, I, I've been reading through the policy a couple of times, and like I said, I have a lot of thoughts on how it could be. I think there's a lot tightening that, that needs to happen here. And so to the extent that we're talking about crafting policy and meeting with the various groups to organize that, it's something that, you know, I would like to do. And I know that Councilmember Trupiano has been integral within the concert space, so that, that would be my recommendation. And I think we can wrap this up fairly quickly and then bring it back quickly.
Do you, do you want to see if anybody else wants to be on it? I mean, I get that that's your, your ask, but do you want to be on it?
This is not something that I want to be on.
Okay, I just want to be sure. I don't either, but I just thought it might be nice to ask.
But I do request that whatever the committee does do, I want to see a red line.
Yeah.
Not that this is the, not that this is the policy that I'm comfortable with coming back to us. I've heard that too many times, and I really want to have a discussion about the change in policy. So this is, I'd like to see the red lines and have a good conversation about it, and civil conversation about it.
I would also like to be able to just send my thoughts, too, that the committee could consider, if that's something that, okay.
That would be a Brown Act issue, so if you have your thoughts, you, I mean, I presume the subcommittee is intended to be an ad hoc committee, not subject to the Brown Act, so I would share your thoughts now, to the extent you have them. Otherwise, if you share them with the subcommittee, you have three members.
Or just wait till they bring it back and see if their edits are the same as mine. Why don't I do?
As a suggestion, if we're that, you could share it with our city manager.
He can't share it with you. So that was why I was suggesting that you, you share it now, or wait till another Brown Act meeting.
Is that the hub and the spoke? Thank you. I remembered.
Okay, fine then. Okay. And then, yeah, and then I, yeah, I think that'd be great. So do we need a...
We need a motion to appoint the two members to the ad hoc committee for the polit, for creating the policy or revising the policy.
Cool. Do you want to make the motion for yourself?
Okay, I make a motion to create a subcommittee, an ad hoc subcommittee, devoted to city-sponsored events and the policy around that.
Okay. I will second that. Oh, you have to put the members.
If you could add the members.
Oh, and the members of that committee would be Mayor Juan and myself, Councilmember Trupiano.
Okay, I will second that and call the roll. Councilmember Clevin?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Trupiano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so that concludes item 8B. And now we move on to 8C, direction to city staff and on council, strategic planning process. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, so this, as outlined in the staff report, I give a framework of what your strategic planning process could look like, but it really is up to council ultimately of what you want to do for your strategic planning process. Council throughout the years, I think, has done, referred to as goal-setting and workshops and different things of that nature. But what I... But what I have not seen in the recent history is what I am accustomed to, which is a true kind of broad strategic planning process. And the benefit of that is that it really could provide a multi-year framework to myself as the city manager to help resource city staff into the priorities of council, whether that's human resources and/or financial resources as we move forward. And again, sometimes where we need to be making, as we've talked about, different occasions, a lot of different operational efficiencies, adding technology, modernizing the organization, all the things that we need to do to be sustainable for the future. In the staff report, I articulate a little bit more detail of that value. But what I want to just go over today is kind of what staff's initial recommendation is. And again, it's up to your council on exactly how you want the structure and framework of this potential strategic planning process to look like. So staff is recommending, and what I have had success in the past, is to do two community-based events to get community feedback on what they see, the kind of vision and larger strategic items they would want addressed in the community. My experience is that typically, we hire a third-party consultant to do all of this for us. I would recommend working with Trepeppy Smith, who is well-recognized throughout the state of California for this work. That initial two days, one would be a weekday, one would be a weekend, in staff's recommendation, would just be with the consultants and the community. I would not be there as a city manager. I'd recommend no council members would be there. And the community would just really go through a process with this consultant to get all of that information and feedback of what they want to see in the community. That consultant would then bring that back to council in a report. He would publicly provide you that information. You then would be able to digest that. And separate and distinct from that, this consultant would then meet with all of you one-on-one to get kind of your individualized desires and strategic visions of what you think we need to do in the future. To be able to take that to a one-day council session that we are trying to do on December 12th as an all-day session, starting at nine, ending at five, where the morning typically would be staff giving you a five-year forecast, your city engineer would kind of go over road study sessions so you understand the issues with roads in the coming five to seven years, any other kind of, I would say, needs or issues that aren't being addressed under that current five-year forecast, kind of our normal standard procedure of what isn't there. For us, it could be a vehicle replacement process we don't have, it could be a variety of things like that that aren't kind of outlined anywhere. And that is to give council kind of a framework of the current constraints that we potentially would have. So when you go to the afternoon, four hours, which is really your strategic planning conversation, and we would structure the physical plan to the room and everything to be that, you would have that context of a kind of limited resources and/or if you wanted different things, how we would go about providing the resources to enhance what we currently have to achieve those goals. On top of that, they would go over things with you in that process about, you know, what does success look like? Essentially, what are we measuring success on some of those visions you have? And then we would go through a process of kind of outlining how we would come back to you to identify to you and the community, how we're kind of meeting those larger strategic visions that you as council had moving forward in the months and years to come. The final piece would be then bringing all of that back in a final report to council in a public meeting to kind of, you know, stamp it in a report that we then use, again, to bring back on a, whether that's quarterly or whatever is determined is the best way to review that success and progress with council and the community moving forward. That's framework that I've seen success with. It is all a public process, as you well know. So, you know, the public is allowed to be at the one-day full event as much as they are at the community event. But there are a variety of ways this can be done. And so although that's staff's recommendation, I will turn it back to council for really your discussion and desire on how you would like this type of process to be moving forward.
Thank you. Questions from council? All right. Public comment? Anyone have a public comment on this? Now's the time. Seeing none on nine. Always give it a minute because they could be surprised and they have to take a moment to race, you have to find the right button to push. All right, well, seeing none, then I will close public comment and move back for discussion. Any comment or discussion items from council?
I think this is brilliant. I appreciate the thought. We did not have an effective goal-setting session this year. We didn't make any goals. So we are not held accountable to any goals this particular year. It just, it's just strange that as a council, that we don't have specific goalposts we're trying to hit. Now, I get our staff are doing amazing things in spite of that, but we have not set goalposts for us to accomplish this year. Lot of good conversation, but no goals. We need to look at this. We all recognize and have all stated there are financial challenges. And there are lots of discussions on what may be solutions, but we need to have a conversation about that. And I think the start of that needs to be exactly as presented, which is two days of having the public weigh in without our input, be in a room with somebody who's listening and taking notes, and then coming back to us to have a good conversation about what they're saying. And this is different than, we could send a survey again, but obviously that gives some people heartburn. So actually talking to them directly face-to-face would be an awesome way to get public input so that we can then digest that and come together. I love the fact that it's a full day to really have those conversations. I would like to add that we need to add a conversation about our mission and our vision in that. I've asked for this in the past. If we're gonna, if we're gonna make a strategic plan, we gotta look at it all. I want to read something real quick. This is our vision statement. "The City of Clayton organization will be recognized as a premier small city. Customer service will be our hallmark. Organizational processes will be a model of efficiency and effectiveness. Innovation will be commonplace. An excellence of work product will be the norm." I love this. "The employees will enjoy their work environment and each will feel, each will be valued and respected member in his or her field of work. All residents and city council will be proud of their city government." God, I love that. Whoever wrote that, I applaud them and pat them on the back. Let's talk about that and what we're doing as a city, and if we actually see that as our vision and we're living up to that. That's what the whole strategic plan is, is to come up with a roadmap, not only for fiscal sustainability, but also a vision of who we are as a city and what we want to be. That needs to be an all-day conversation with a plan put together, and I'm all for it.
Other comments?
So I think the idea is terrific also, and some of this is in my background in strategic planning and facilitation. I'm concerned about the $25,000 price tag. And so I was kind of brainstorming with our city manager about maybe other ways to do it. I am not opposed to a full day. I think it deserves the time and devotion to laying out a plan. And one of the suggestions I had this morning was, is there a way to maybe kind of combine the community comment with our session and do it on a Saturday? I know Saturdays are difficult. It's, maybe cuts into family time, but so that the public can be present rather than do two, I don't know, one evening, one morning. I don't know what the terms of this consultant has in mind. But could it be an all-day Saturday where people come here and they feel comfortable and we feel comfortable and maybe we get out of this little format? And, because the cost does trouble me a little bit, and I know you said surveys do give people heartburn, but there are less expensive ways of doing a survey, and that would be a way of making sure if you couldn't even come to that all-day meeting, or if we have a separate community session that you have a voice and you've had an opportunity to weigh in. And I'm thinking like a survey monkey, not something that's $30,000. So, those are my comments. I definitely want the public to be a part of it. I'm definitely willing to devote a whole day to it. I definitely think it's a good idea, and there will be some benefit. And I know we tried to have a goal-setting session. I don't think we devoted enough time to it. We ran out of time. We had another consultant presenting. And, and look, we were also, we had an interim city manager, and now we have a permanent city manager. And I think this is a good opportunity to do this and hear from our department heads about their vision for the next five years. So that's my input.
Yeah, I definitely, I definitely think that having a strategic plan or planning session is beneficial. I'm not quite sold on the idea presented. I guess it was, it was notable that, you know, we seemed to have already selected a vendor, and for $25,000, it seems like that's something that we'd want to pursue, a more competitive process. But even still, I would say, I'm not a fan of spending money on consultants for this type of work. I just, I don't really, I don't think it's a serious value add, especially because a lot of this discussion, especially when you talk about the vision, it is very aspirational. And I always, I tend to focus more on what's achievable. And so, you know, from a, from a strategic perspective, I do think that we should have these things laid out, but at the end, at the same time, you know, we have both, we also have tactical things that we need to address. And so, like, even when I read the report, I'm not sure that I can identify specific deliverables that beyond, like, what I would consider boilerplate. And so from, you know, involving the community is great. I think we should do that. I think having strategic planning sessions, great, we should do that. Eight hours or all day seems excessive, like, in a big way, I would say. When we did the goal-setting, you know, the constraint really at that time, if I recall correctly, was that someone else had the room that day. We did it on a day that someone else had the room. But if we don't have that constraint, like, I'm assuming tonight, not that we're gonna do it tonight, you can spend a lot more time on it. And so we were constrained because of that, and the, you know, we had a few presenters at the time, and so it occupied the space. But, yeah, I definitely don't want to spend $25,000. I kind of don't want to spend anything. I do, I think this is a discussion that we can have, I mean, we're all professionals here. I think we can have a conversation about it and come to consensus or at least come to conclusion on how we would proceed. That's probably how I'd approach it. Again, an eight-hour session, to me, seems excessive. I think the strategic vision that we would have is probably something that we all know already. And we can, I want to get input, but there's a few bright-line pathways that we, in various ways, have all talked about. And so how we get there is great, we should talk about that. But I definitely don't want to use resources to do that. So that's my take on it.
A couple of comments. Very familiar with the strategic planning process. In fact, that's one of my first jobs I had here in San Francisco when I was working with AT&amp;T. Not sure we need a full day. I'm having calendar issues with the 12th of December, but we can probably work around that. But I, too, am very concerned about the cost. Twenty to 25,000, I know that we've had these in the past, and we've had them for less than $10,000. So I don't know where this number is coming from, but it seems excessive. And I would be in favor, if we're gonna do it, somehow find a less costly way of doing it.
I have a couple of thoughts. First that comes to mind is how supportive that this council was of having a new city manager come on board after our last goal-setting session and wanting to allow the new city manager time to get to know what was happening in the city and figuring out who's doing what to whom, what needs to be done, where the gaps are. And then, as much as I was pushing for making sure that we came back and completed that so that we can actually have goals that we were trying to work towards, it was like, no, let him, let him come back and let us know what he needs to do, which is what he's doing. And so I'm a little surprised and disheartened to hear that we're poo-pooing that right now. And I understand that we're all for having this session, that the money is part of the issue, which I understand, given our finances. But I'm also trying to find the disconnect between having an issue, paying for something that's actually going to set us up for success in the future, when we, when we paid money to have a consultant do a fee schedule, which I won't belabor that point, but that was pretty crappy, which I shared two months ago. So I'm inclined to allow staff to do this. Eight hours does seem like a lot, but I do like the idea of engaging the community. I do like your idea of having a survey monkey to elicit feedback from the entire community for those who can't make it. And I do believe that the city manager had intended to allow different times, whether it was a different middle of the day of the week, in the morning, and maybe a different day at night, so that more people, it could be on the weekend, so that we can get more input from people sitting in, in the room. And I'm just trying to understand the dynamic of how are we going to get feedback from the public then if it's only on one day with all of us? I'm not sure if that's what you guys were saying, to just have it one time, because I do think that you lose a little bit of people being able to be free and speak freely. I think that people will be a little bit more, why do I mind going out? Be a little more candid with the neutral party. So if the intent is to not have the consultant do it, or they're not able to do it for 10 grand, as the vice mayor said, what would be, what would that look like? So that we're making sure that we're actually having somebody who's moderating, getting the community input, distilling that information and bringing it back to us for us to talk about? Because what I don't want to happen is that we're sitting in a room for eight hours or four hours on a weekend, and we end that with not having some conclusion because people can't get out of each other's way and accusations are flying. I think that's the intent, is to get away from that and allow a mechanism for the public to give their input on how they feel about our city as a whole, et cetera. That gets distilled, shared with us. We can take that feedback, internalize it, and then all five talk to figure out how do we all move forward together. And I don't know, I don't know that we can do that with all of us in the room with the community, too. So those are my initial thoughts.
Yeah, I just looked back at the last three goal-setting sessions. The first one, when Raina Schwartz came right on board, and she asked for a moderated session, and the document that came out of that was actually a goalpost setting, this is what we're gonna do this year. She capitulated the second year when I was mayor to try to do a goal-setting session, and it was terrible. There was no communication, no real goal set, and a lot of, it was very, very difficult. And looking at what happened this year, again, we can make excuses for it, but an unmoderated goal-setting session did not provide detailed results that we can actually stood to. It's, my opinion, we all love Clayton, we all want what's best, we all have an idea of what the future is, but unless we have a moderated conversation that keeps us on point towards common goals and really accentuates our commonalities and the things that we like together, rather than spinning out on things which we disagree on, I think that it's gonna be a waste of time and to only do a few hours on a Saturday. And having somebody really keeping us focused on the conversation will be beneficial. And the money that we spend on this will benefit all of us and Clayton. And I think it's worth the effort.
I have a suggestion. And again, always trying to come to a compromise, right? That's what we all want to try to achieve. So what if, Brett, if you can go back, maybe to Tripepe Smith, because I know part of what they wanted to do was interview us all individually first and kind of get our feedback on our goals and the things that we're hoping to achieve. And what if the morning, and I don't know if this would cut down on the price, but maybe the morning is the open session with the public only? And then we come in later for, we hear the results of that session? And then we go into our own goal-setting session in the afternoon, whether it's a Saturday or it's a Wednesday? Or I just think Saturday is more conducive to most people being able to attend. And I don't know if there's a survey component to that also for anybody who can't come that Saturday morning, but could it be sort of a hybrid of? Because I do think there's enormous benefit. Why do you say no?
I'm just saying, trying to condense this into a one-day event is, is not going to give us the detail we want for a strategic plan. This is a, this is an undertaking. And so I'm saying, this, this will take time to get our, the community really to be away from us to, to.
Yes, and that would be the morning session, where they would come in and work with, whether it's Tripepe Smith or whomever we determine. And we would not be here. Then we, they would reveal what that session, I mean, I've sat in a million of these. And then we go into our own session in the afternoon. It could, yeah, maybe eight hours is a long day for all of us, but Brett, were you going to say something?
Well, hold on a sec. So to what end though? You say that you're talking about this is, you know, I'm paraphrasing what you just described. But I always think, to what end? What is the objective? What's the deliverable at the end that you would hope to achieve, hope to receive, I guess?
We're creating a roadmap for what we think the future of Clayton looks like.
No, 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 I'm talking about that session.
That's what a strategic plan is. It's, it's a roadmap. And, I mean, so, I mean, it's important to have good dialogue and community feedback. And it's important for us to see all that feedback afterwards and digest it. I don't, I don't think we can do this in three or four hours. I think it's going to take some time, especially with some of the challenges we have in communication. I mean, so, I mean, I think that that's going to be important to spend the time to have a good result.
What is a good result? That's what I'm asking. Like, what's the, what's the objective?
We're looking at who we are as a city and what we want for our future and how to get there. We are looking at the road conditions, we're looking at our financial conditions, we're looking at our staffing conditions, we're looking at how, how we, we're looking at who we're going to be in the future and what our dreams and visions are. Even, even if it's to be the best premier small city in this neck of the woods, how do, how do we maintain that? What level of service does that require? And what that our citizens want? And how do we, how do we pay for that? I mean, there's a, there's a bunch of conversations. It's to take what the citizens want and then for us to digest and figure out how to get that. It's, it's, I don't think it's something you can do on the back of a napkin and say, okay, here's your plan. It's going to take some, take some effort.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think it said in the report, isn't the consultant going to sit with community, then sit with us, and then at a later meeting, come back with metrics and deliverables, et cetera, right? So it's not all supposed to be done on the same day?
Sure. And again, the 20 to 25,000 is the estimate based on my conversations with them initially about if we were to do what staff's recommending, does this cost this? And, and the half of the cost roughly, not quite, is obviously them coming in for two all-day, or, you know, four to six-hour days of community meetings, writing the report, coming back to council. That is a chunk of it, right? What I can say to all of you is, I can't adjust our agenda work plans to do the five-year forecasts and road study session and other things at council meetings before December instead of the day of, which gives you a different bucket of time. It doesn't necessarily change the cost, but it might free up how you want to do this logistically. I can do that by just pushing out some things further out that aren't as imperative. If that's helpful, I can, I can start to think about how that would work in the coming months as far as what we bring to you. You'd still have that information, you'd have it beforehand, but you'd still have it, you would have it, so as you walk into these conversations, it's still readily available and in the front of your mind. It just wouldn't be the day of.
Yeah, I mean, the whole, the idea of like consultant comes in, asks you questions, does interviews individually, comes back with feedback. I mean, I think we've done that twice already now. Maybe, maybe three times? I don't recall. And it was prior to you getting here, obviously.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall seeing anything from consultants.
Yeah, we did it. Like, you identified the one that we did when Raina was here. I'm glad you found the, you found the value. I was highly disappointed in it. I didn't really think it was valuable at all.
Can you share why?
There's no, there was no product. There's no action. There's nothing deliverable. Like, it was, it was very similar to what, exactly what you would expect out of a consultant of this type. They, I mean, I think I could probably do it. They, maybe. They, they ask you generic questions, you get generic responses, and it's like, it reads like a self-help book. I don't find those valuable at all, actually. We did interviews, I think I, I met with the gentleman twice? And we talked through stuff and then he correlated all of our, all of our feedback. And, okay, but we, I don't, we don't need to pay someone to do that. Like, he asked pretty boilerplate questions, he got standard answers, and that's, we got exactly what you would expect from something. And even though I found it disappointing, it only costs $5,000. And I don't know if you get what you pay for. Maybe if we paid someone more, you'd get a better result. But I did not enjoy it and I didn't think it was valuable. Like, it was, it was done and then it was over. And that is the only time we ever thought about it.
So I guess.
And that's not the goal of a strategic plan.
Right. So my, my, I guess, vision for what I would get out of this from city manager's perspective is that your conversation in the public session would be, you know, we see Clayton as being, you know, a highly, you know, beautified, low-crime, community policing, I don't know, staff, you know, blah, 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 blah. And, and out of that are things that have to happen, right? So if you want a certain level of beautification, I could go, okay, well, to do that, as you're, you know, you're talking about, we really need to look at staffing at this or consultant cost of that to do that from landscaping perspective. Or if you want policing at this level, we may need to add two traffic cops and that costs this. And, and then your council can go, okay, well, clearly the five-year forecast said we can't do that. So the idea is that, do we shift resources and do not do a lot of other stuff, which could have a lot of impacts as far as council's direction? Or do you have other ways you want us to try to get revenue to do? I mean, those are the things I, I would expect to come out of the strategic planning, to then I would have metrics to come back to say how we're going about that. You know, did we add the staff? Did we go forward with whatever strategic cost-shifting initiatives or revenue generation or whatever is the, is the desire of council? That's what I would assume would come out of this, not, you know, we want to be the best without any tangible things around that. I guess, I wouldn't expect that out of this product.
And that's a good discussion. I don't think we need to pay someone $25,000 to have it. We can have it like, well, if we had it properly attended, we could have it right now.
Well, on October 3rd, we are going to be talking about public works, maybe in landscaping.
Right, yeah, so there'll be aspects of it, right? That'll happen. I think where there's value to consultants is the community input, which I think is valuable in my experience. Again, I can only go on what I've done in the past to kind of provide context for council to have that another layer. And it's, it has been helpful in my experience when the city manager is not the facilitator of the conversation, because there usually have to be a very active participant in the conversation as far as data and information, as those things are going on with council. And it can be difficult, and I'll be very frank, if council isn't coalescing in the room either, you now have a city manager paying arbiter to his five bosses, which is always not a good interaction either in a public forum. So that, that is why a consultant has value from my history of doing this, as an assistant city manager and finance director, heavily involved in it in various cities. That's the value I've seen. The cost, again, I could cut out the entire community side and I'd probably get it down to maybe 10,000 to 15,000 with consultant. I do believe a little bit in what you pay for. You know, I'll be honest, I think at times we may have cheaped out in the past as a, as a community and, and it's not good. There's reasons why I have relationships with certain people long-term. It's because they do well, they provide well, and they consistently do this around the state and the country. And, and there are firms that do this exponentially better than others. And so we don't have to use Tripepe Smith, but I will tell you, for the timing of trying to do this in a reasonable time before maybe the end of the year to start to craft this as we move to the next budget process, I, to get a different firm and go through a competitive process, which you don't necessarily have to do at this level, it would just be deeper into the spring. And if that's the council's desire, we absolutely can do that. But we were trying to get this more towards having a value towards the end of the calendar year to start to help us craft at least the next budget process and what that might look like based on council's discussion and the strategic planning process.
So again, what about the idea of having, if we used a facilitator, having the public come in in the morning and have a forum of several hours unto their own? And then us coming in after that, understanding the results of that forum, we'll still have had the one-on-one discussions with the consultant? And then we'll spend the whole rest of the day doing strategic planning? Is that something we could talk to Tripepe Smith about?
We could talk to them about whatever, again, the flavor of council. It is your discretion. What I would have to do in that is then do all of the prep, five-year forecast, Larry with the roads analysis, and any other staff, department head kind of updates for council from between, you know, call it now and that date. So you have it, you know, pre-done instead of the day of, so you can use that day of for the public if you were to move in that direction, which is fine. We just have to retool a little bit.
Is there more? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Normally you would have given it to us when?
Typically, I've done it the day of. So the morning session would be staff. So that's the five-year forecast.
And why couldn't we have it the same day?
I would say if I go through a five-year forecast, a road study session and one other, maybe pertinent one, and then you try to get the public in, we're going to start running against the clock really bad again for you guys. And so my fear is, you're going to feel rushed as the day kind of progresses and you're going to end up in a similar situation that you did in the, we'll call it, goal-setting timeframe. And I don't want to do that to you because then I think we end up with, I think, as the mayor alludes to, not the best in product. And we, and to come back is a whole nother adventure, right, at that point? I would rather give it to you ahead of time in various study sessions, we'll call it. And so you have it, and then that day is fully dedicated to, whether it's public or council, you guys would have that full day to do what you need to do from a strategic planning perspective.
And my final question was, Amy, are you a possible facilitator? Could that be something that we could explore? I don't know if that is something.
Council member Trupiaan is calling an audible.
I will share with you, I've worked with Tripepe Smith quite a bit in my history as well. They are considered the premier facilitator.
Yes, I know that. I'm just thinking of money savings. That the question was, if we did it internally and we didn't use a consultant, yeah.
I mean, I'd be happy to. I just think they have much greater expertise.
I understand.
And, and again, you could end up in a situation if council doesn't coalesce where your, my five bosses aren't the one, but now she's your, our, you know, I just think putting staff in between that can get messy.
I understand.
Yeah.
Could be a little awkward. Yeah, I, I'm not, like I said, I, oh, the chair is breaking on me as we speak. Yeah, I'm not a fan of what's on the table right now, but I do think the effort is worthwhile. And so like, if you were able to like have other conversations and maybe like we can come to the table with something a little more palatable, then that would be better. You know, I, I get the idea, I hear you on facilitators. I'm not really a fan, but they do have value. And I have engaged them in the, you know, professionally in different areas. And I do think that they, a good facilitator can add a lot of value. So I guess it's just a balance of what they're doing versus the cost. Now, when it comes to the public, I think involving the public is great, but I also think, I'm assuming that all of us are in pretty regular contact with the public and we are essentially here elected to represent the public. We have insight into what folks are thinking. We get feedback quite a bit. I think you guys get feedback, I get feedback. And so that has an aspect of that. But in terms of overall costs, I think it's, it's too high. And now, is the, for the roads component, I was just thinking about this. Is the road condition presentation, is that, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, is that much different than the one that we get every other year anyways on the PCI analysis? Because that seems very, like, it seems like the data is always, is continually available to us.
It, it is, but I think, I would need the city engineer really to put context to what the next five to seven years look like in summary version. We're, we're heading to a path where council, whether it's the context of roads, the context of the general fund, structural imbalance, the context of things that aren't even in the general fund that you typically do in a city, that aren't even in there yet, that, that would add to our deficit. The council needs to, I think, hear and understand that holistically to be able to know and provide direction to my office on where to go. Because, you know, depending on what that direction is, and it could go a variety of different ways, there could be potentially a lot of things that are kind of hanging out there unmet, and roads could be one of them. I faced this in both of my former cities where they waited a little too long and the cost of roads became almost insurmountable. And so we're not there yet here, but I think having that context of a conversation, which is a little bit more detailed than what you're saying, Mayor Juan, but, but I don't think it's too far off, but it is a little bit more detailed, along with understanding everything else, I think provides the holistic information council needs to give direction on what that vision looks like, knowing all of that. And I think that's where I really want to make sure council is fully informed of that and then provides direction based on that to me, so we know what we need to do in the coming, you know, two, four, six years truly? Because we're going to have to strategize that far out to be able to pivot and maneuver depending on what council's direction is.
Yeah, I, okay. I mean, that's, I think that's fair. I think in the context here specifically, you know, we have the road discussion every other year at least. And I, I'm, we've had quite extensive discussion about how to treat it, what the trade-offs are, the way that the PCI essentially works, how the, I forget, there's the name of a software that we use. It's called.
We typically use Streetsaver.
Streetsaver, that's right.
Yeah, what I, and not to deviate, so the city attorney doesn't stop us, but we're, we're losing points at a rate that I need council to be aware of. And the threshold where we hit, which is not too far off, what that means from a cost context and what that means relative to everything else in the cost context issue. All of these issues are converging on themselves. And as I say, the sky's not falling, but rain clouds are coming and we have time to get our umbrellas. I need to know which umbrellas to grab and which ones to leave behind. And I think without providing you the full context of all of that together, I just want to make sure we're not looking at things myopically and that you're looking at everything with the full chessboard in front of you to give that direction. And so what I've done in the past and where I'm going with this is to provide you all of that in this kind of form. of that in this kind of format in some way, shape, or form that allows you all to tell me, you know, we'd like you to go a lot left, or a lot right, or a lot up, or a lot down, whatever that is. I then can make sure you guys know the trade-offs of that collectively and what that means. And then we can start, whether it's human resources and/or, as I say, financial resources, moving in that more specific direction, where right now it's a little bit broad, right? And we have, depending on getting council's decisions, we have certain timeframes of elections that may or may not need to be used. And the more of those windows get lessened, the more difficult this becomes to implement a path if council chooses certain directions or not. And that's where I'm just concerned with from a broader two, four, six-year timing perspective. You know, my job is to see for you all as best I can out that far and not just look at, you know, day-to-day, week-to-week.
I can give you my opinion. Too costly, and I'm not sure about a full day.
Okay.
And on that particular day.
Yeah, on that day is a no-go for me as well.
I just wanted to say that, yes, we all talked to many residents in Clayton. We all have lots of conversations with, and we're elected to represent the cities, the citizens of Clayton. But I personally believe that a forum for them to talk without our presence about the needs of city after being presented with data and also by looking at what they want, it would be great feedback. That again, is unfettered by our presence, by their talking, and some third parties actually taking the information. It'd be good information to have. I don't espouse and know everything every resident I speak to would want about the future five or six years from now. And I would think that that would be a valuable report to see. So I just disagree with you if that's okay.
The only other thing that I'd add on is if we are considering the weekend is that you lose a lot of the families because their children have sports, especially in the mornings. So I think we have to figure out and brainstorm a different way than doing it on a Saturday morning. Think about all the families with young kids. And if we're trying to get a lot of the population's input, yes, we definitely talk to a lot of people. But my concern is that we're talking to people in a vacuum and who agree with us. And there's probably, and that might be, let's call that 2,000 people out of 12, right? So you've got 10,000 people who don't even know what's happening in our community, that our revenues are not where they should be, et cetera. And so if we're trying to really actually inform everyone and get their input once they know what's happening, or maybe they don't, and they're like, it's great, don't know what's going on, why are you guys calling us here? I just think that we can get more information out to folks and get their input by doing it other days of the week instead of the weekend, especially new families. I mean, we had Mr., I forgot what his last name was. Hi.
Hi.
Hyvee.
Yeah.
Who's new here. And so you get, you just, we have people who have lived here 40 years, and we have people who just moved here. And I think that we need to try to make sure that we're getting input and feedback from all of them, right? So if you think about the longevity of people who have been here already, they might not want to see anything change. But the population that's actually newer might have different ideas of how they want to see their community grow. I just think that we need to make sure that we're tapping all of those folks and not assuming that we know what the community wants based off of the people I'm talking to, you're talking to, you're talking to, et cetera. I just think we miss out on a lot of them. So doing it on a Saturday morning, I have problems with. I don't recall the last one or any of them being $5,000. I really did think that Raina came to us and said, I need, it was either 20 or 30 grand that she had asked us for, for the consultants, because I remember that was the amount that bothered you a lot. Five seems really low. I don't remember that being the goal-setting.
Yeah, the first one was five. It was within her spending. I suggested that she not do it, and she said, I'm doing it anyways.
I thought her spending was up to 30. It was up to 30. It was a lot. And you did say that. You did tell her, and it was within her purview.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't have a problem with, yes, I know that we are strapped for cash, but given our reserves and the fact that this is something that hasn't been done in quite some time effectively, to your point, I think it's money well-spent to get us, to really get this council, this council and the staff the support that they need, especially if they're going to have deliverables that they need to be giving to us, which I, I mean, they're doing a great job, given the fact that they don't actually have that yet. I think that we would, we're wasting time even, time's ticking, and they're still here and have to be back tomorrow. I just think that, yes, this could be more cleaned up coming back from Tripeppy Smith and understanding what things we could cut out, but just saying an outright don't have a facilitator, I think is a mistake. I think that won't serve us well going forward.
Well, and again, I agree. I like the facilitator. I like the third-party person. So Brett, just to move things along, is there, and you said this was the staff's recommendation. Is it, could you go back to Tripeppy Smith and say, yeah, money seems a little bit high, we still want the public input, we're still willing to devote the time that we need? I disagree on the weekend because I think during the week, I don't know, I think people with children and whatnot are even more pressed for time because they're school and they've got jobs and people are back in offices and, but, so I go back to the survey again, but maybe ask them about a survey, I don't know.
Yeah.
I guess we don't have to resolve it tonight, but some other options.
If you're going to look for people to be present during the thing, you're automatically going to self-select quite a bit. You're going to self-select on folks that, you know, one, have availability, and two, are interested. And I just question, I would question the feedback or the result in any case, given that you're, I mean, you're going to have two sessions, one, maybe two. And it's just people who, I mean, like, it's, the people who attend these types of things tend to self-select, and you're, you will never get the cross-section that's representative like you do when you have a vote or something. Like, that's a, that's a much better sampling. In this case, you're going to get some, probably, you've had a lot of sessions, like, what do you call it, coffee sessions or whatnot, and you'll, you see, you get similar folks, the folks that are available and are interested. You'll get new folks as well, but, you know, I don't, I don't know how much stock you can, you can always question the folks that aren't there.
Well, and let's think of utilitarian and heading the greatest mass.
Yes.
And to me, that's a survey.
Yes.
Where people could just sit at their computer at any, at any time and complete and share their vision, and they can write an essay or however we construct it, or Tripeppy Smith constructs it. And to me, that's the easiest way to get people's input if we also publicize it properly.
Yeah, and about the weekend, I'm a little torn as well. I mean, I think, I think time is always a challenge for, for folks. And it's not just them, it's us too. It's staff, it's everyone. And I think that's a challenge. And that's why, like, I think eight hours is excessive, because that's a, it's a big ask, especially given the, all the other times. So I guess I would, I think right now, just again, to, as you say, to move forward, I think it would be, my recommendation would be to take another pass with the feedback that you've gone and see where we can shave on both, not both, sorry, on each of cost, delivery mechanism, and timing. Like, where the levers are for those. I think each of us has certain concerns over those, and see what you can come up with as a second pass.
Including-
That'd be my recommendation.
Including the survey option, so?
Yeah, that's a mechanism.
Yeah, okay.
Like, there may be other mechanisms, and I don't know what the level of effort is on each of those. And maybe it's like more economical, maybe it's not, I don't know. I think that's information that would be good to have.
And then, and being able to speak freely, an anonymous survey, or I don't know if it's anonymous or not anonymous, but then you certainly can really share your feedback.
Yeah, what we can, I want to make sure I'm hearing right and that I got three head-noddy kind of sort of things around what I'm about to say, just so I can go forward. So look to do it in a way that provides community feedback, potentially in a slightly more cost-effective manner, we'll call it, a survey is maybe that. Looking at a survey that is at least restricted, so it doesn't become a ballot stuffing box, right, is probably of value. That may-
We have click farms.
Yeah, I mean, it may, so something around that from Tripeppy Smith, whatever that is, and they can give me advice. And then still coming back for a day that you all will select, I'm assuming, a full day.
Partial day.
Okay, whatever, partial meaning four hours, six, I mean, this helps because that's part of what their fee is derived on, right, is the day. And so if we're thinking survey and six-hour day with council, if that's kind of the tenor somewhere, you know, give or take whatever they want to decide, if that's generally what you're taking, I can go back and try to work through that with them and come back to council with something like that. But I want to make sure I've got enough of council that that's the reality we want to do.
I also liked your idea earlier of having a lead-up with the various study sessions so that we could do a little pre-work.
Okay.
I think that's a good call-out.
Okay, that's fine.
And then with that, maybe you could do a half-day, if you do all the pre-work ahead of time, and we come in fully, fully immersed in all the knowledge that you would like to impart on us.
Okay.
Can we price out four and six and eight hour?
Yeah, I can-
Do some thresholding.
Right, there we go.
Because if four is going to be the same at eight, doing the rest of what we're doing.
Yeah, that's absolutely doable, sure.
And December 12th doesn't sound like it's good for-
No, that's a Tuesday, right, so?
That was a Tuesday, an off Tuesday. I would say if we have to develop a survey though with Tripeppy Smith, the question I'll have for council is, does council want input on the survey questions or not? Because that dictates the timing. If the answer's yes, that's fine. I'm saying all this because with them, I'm going to have to push this probably out to where your day is probably in January-ish late, just knowing some of the timeframes that they have to work around.
So this might be a mala question. If they crafted the serv, well, I don't know if we'd give feedback or input first and then feedback later, and then could they send us a final result and we could weigh in but not reply all? Like, now we would need to do a public meeting.
Yeah, so I've typically done a public meeting and council has literally developed it in a public meeting.
I see, I see.
They couldn't, well, as an example, could a survey be developed, send it to council? Council individually responds to the preparer. The preparer looks at the thing and then does whatever they want to do with that?
No. That's the serial meeting that we talked about earlier. So I think you could, you could either give initial feedback such that they can prepare a document and then bring that, you know, send that out to you, and then you can discuss that document at a public meeting if you want to review the survey.
That's unfortunate, okay.
Which would be like Tripeppy Smith coming here and saying, okay, here, here's the survey.
Correct.
And but could we have any initial input on some of the questions we, okay?
At a public meeting.
At a public meeting, thank you.
Unless you did an ad hoc committee like you just did earlier, but I think-
I like the, I like the input a little bit, I think. I'm not sure. It seems like it takes, it'll take a little bit of time.
It'll take time and there will be cost, right? Because now every time we're engaging them, it's, it's different. But there could be value that you're, what I don't want to do is do something and you all are not comfortable with the questions, and then there's not value, right? So-
I think that's what happened with the last survey.
And the last survey was, there was a lot of comment and it was a lot of push-pull, and you were trying, or trying to get people to go in a certain direction.
Yeah.
I'm nothing, I agree or disagree, but that was some of the feedback. So yeah, it would be nice to have input.
Okay. I can ask them the context of all of these costs and come back to all of you and get a sense. Everything's getting pushed out, though, I'll tell you that. So just from a expectation standpoint, these, you know, we're probably into January, February before we're the meat and potatoes of this. It's really, you know, whether it's your day or, you know, the survey results, and then your day, or, you know, like, I mean, I think, you know, just, just understand that we're looking at an early 24, which generally is okay relative to the budget, sort of, but we'll, we'll, we'll just create expectations after that.
There's that expression that says, you have to go slow to go fast.
Thank you.
I'm, if that's good with at least three of you, then I can go back and come back, probably October 17th is more realistic to get a cost back to you in an item, is my guess.
Do we have to vote, or you're just giving direction? We just nod, we're nodding?
Direction's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would like that more exploratory with an additional pass.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. Thank you. That's helpful.
Any other comment before we close this item?
Nope, I just appreciate you giving us the background and doing the initial work. Thank you.
All right, that concludes item 8C. Next is item nine, council items for request for future meetings. Anyone have any requests for future meetings? Councilmember Tilden.
I have one, just to bring back in some form or another, a discussion about fire-safe councils.
Following up on an item I brought up a couple meetings ago, that is a status on the request by the Stranahan people for the parking permit program.
Okay. So if I could just give an update, when that was first brought up, I had already talked to Mr. Hood and Mr. Will Clark and said that January is most likely when staff would bring back at least the initial conversation about it. In that conversation, they were fine with that timeline. That was a couple weeks ago. I had already talked, maybe a month plus ago now. So we're really looking at January for that. And the reason being is we're not even constructed yet, so we have a little time to have a conversation about that.
So January.
The initial conversation will be in January, yeah.
No, because they keep asking me. Thank you.
All right. Okay, with, if there's no other items, that concludes item nine. Next is council reports. Councilmember Trippion, did you want to kick us off?
I'm going to zip through mine. See, when we only have one meeting a month, there's a lot more on this end to report. So of course, weekly meetings with our city manager, which I always enjoy. Concerts in the Grove, of course, August 19, September 2, and September 16. We, we really ended on a high note. I'll be curious to see what our final ledger looks like next week. But Saturday was pretty much off the hook, and it was great to see the chief there. We really had a lot of fun. It was a great season, and thank you Vice Mayor Diaz for all your support. August 22, I attended the planning commission meeting. And Dana, thank you very much. That PowerPoint was super helpful. And we had the swearing-in of our new planning commissioners and the election of our new chair, who I don't think is here anymore, Richanea, and Vice Chair Maria Schulman. So congratulations to them. Elected Women's Luncheon on August 25. We had a wonderful turnout, and you can see the election is heating up already. We had a board meeting here in Hoyer Hall for the East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy. I'm on the governing board. And then I had a follow-up site visit with them at their new Knights and Property with their executive director. I attended the CBCA meeting at the Clayton Valley Presbyterian Church, which was a lot of fun, hot dogs and ice cream. The mayor's conference, I thought everybody just did a fantastic job at the end. People didn't even want to leave. It was really, they were having a good time. So thank you to Climat Tech, who did a great presentation against all odds. And O'Kerr's Country Club, I thought it did a great job with the food and the staffing, and the views were amazing. So congrats to everybody, Amy. Thank you for all your help. And let's see, oh, the 9/11 ceremony at the Firehouse, I thought was one of the most beautiful 9/11 ceremonies we've had, and the turnout was beautiful. So thank you Brett, and Peter, and Vice Mayor Diaz, and everybody who was in attendance. I thought it was just lovely, and it was great to see such a good turnout. We had that Clayton Community Library Foundation meeting last week, and I'm so glad that the contract for the land lease went through today, and bye-bye Keller House and hello containers, and- And Brett, thank you again for taking the lead on that, and they were so impressed with your vision and all your help. The next book sale, I just want to say, I've got one color copy here, the library's book sale, October 28th, 29th, here at the library in Hoyer Hall. And for members only, and memberships, I think, start at like $15, but there's a members-only preview on Friday, October 27th, so if you want to get first dibs, become a member. And the last thing I have was our wonderful day of service, and thank you, Peter and Holly, it was fantastic, thank you city manager, even brought his daughter. We made such huge progress, our small but mighty teams all over the city, we look like ants everywhere, and the library looks great. I feel like we scratched the surface, but it was really rewarding, so thank you for everybody's efforts. Sorry about the long list.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Diaz, do you want a council report?
Thank you. Okay, several things. First, on the 12th, excuse me, the 18th of August, I attended the hot August nights up at the O'Kers Country Club, big night, a lot of things going on. Then on the 19th, the concert, Fleetwood Mask. Then, a very important meeting I attended was on the 25th, put on by the Jewish Community Relations Council. Over 40 elected officials, local, and the state, and even the federal level were there, Mark DeSaulany was present, to bring to focus the growing antisemitism that is taking place throughout the area. To that point, Councilmember Kevin Wilk at Walnut Creek was attacked visually and in person at their city council meetings, and it's a growing issue, and I got to tell you, the community of elected officials are really taking this very seriously and seeing what can be done to address it. Then, again, another concert on the 1st, the Alameda All-Star Band, formerly, what was his name, Greg Allman, that's who it was, Mr. Scher was there. Anyway, then on the 6th, attended the Administration and Finance Committee meeting of the County Connection, still monitoring funds coming in at the state level and at the federal level. Attended our closed session on the 7th, then went over to the mayor's conference, great evening for all. Then on the 10th, the Morgan Territory Community Association had their third annual barbecue that I attended. Then on the 11th, participated in the Contra Costa County Fire Protection District event for recognizing 9/11 and their fallen firefighter. They do that every year, and I've been honored to attend every one of those fallen firefighters, and they lost 18 people last year, and it's absolutely surprising on, it's not from the fires, it's from the smoke that they inhale that really does them in. And finally, we had our final concert of the year on the 16th, East Bay Mud, and it was a stellar night for raising money. First time covered, or broke the $3,000 level. Thank you.
Councilmember Tillman?
Okay, I'm not going to necessarily give the dates, I'll just say what I did since our last meeting was August 15th through yesterday. I had a East Bay Division of the League of California Cities Board meeting. I also had a Clayton Pride Board meeting, as well as a town hall, so that we can continue next steps and elect a new board going forward. I also attended the elected women's, elected women's and empowering women luncheon, where Councilmember Trupiano and our new Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, Maria Schulman, attended. I also attended the closing of Grove Side Bistro, I think that I had shared at the last meeting that she would be closing, and she had a final, a couple of final days, where she asked people to come in and either come and buy merchandise, et cetera, and then she did it again on Saturday for the last concert in the Grove to clean out her freezer, but she's still in town, she's going to be catering, so I'll keep you guys apprised if she does anything else locally, if anybody wants to hire her. I've had my weekly meetings with the city manager, and I've also had meetings with our planning, no, that's not what you are, you're the Community Development Director, sorry, as well as with our executive assistant to the city manager. I attended, at the end of August, for the Mount Diablo Unified School District, they had their second annual Black Family Night Extravaganza, and what that is, is for all of the parents and families who have children who are black, they invite them over, so it's a nice hodge, a melting pot of folks that are in the room, so I don't want everybody to think that it's only black people there, but it is called Black Family Night. And we honored Dr. Felicia Stuckey-Smith, who is the Director of Student Services, so her job is to make sure that all of the students are taken care of, she was a keynote speaker and really talked about making sure that you guys are contacting the district if you do have students who are in the district with any issues, whether that's an IEP or a 504. It's her office that actually helps make sure that you're getting into the schools and getting the services at unit, she oversees that. I attended the CBCA general meeting, we had hot dogs and ice cream, and I felt ill eating it, but we had them. The mayor's, I have to say that somebody there told the planners that that was the best CBCA meal that we've ever had, and I don't understand. The mayor's conference, which again was well-done, I got a lot of compliments from the other mayors and council members from the other cities, not only on the venue and the views coming up, but the food that O'Kers put out, so a couple people went back for seconds and thirds. So, thank you to all the staff who stayed late to do that, and to ensure that that went off without a hitch. The Mount Diablo Education Foundation Board, that is another board that I'm on that serves the students in our area on STEAM, I've mentioned that before, I had a meeting with them, they are going to have a fun run, the same day as Oktoberfest here in the city, which is a morning of September 30th. Thank you, I don't have a calendar for me, September 30th. And I will give more details, we don't have another meeting before then. I'll give more details on the location, maybe I can get it out to the city manager. I also attended the, we had a special closed session meeting, I also attended the 9/11 ceremony that we did have, and thank you again to Councilmember Cloven and Vice Mayor Diaz for your words. I agree with Councilmember Trupiano, it was one of the most moving events that I've attended, and I've attended two of them so far. I attended the last concert in the Grove and wanted to congratulate again Howard Geller on putting on successful events for the last 14-plus years, I think it was 16. It was a packed crowd, and I can only say for half, but the boogying in the park was fun to watch, it always is. And thank you guys again for all that you guys did during the summer. What else? I got my COVID vaccine on Saturday. If anybody wants to know, they're at CVS, the new one. It hurts, but go protect yourselves, because COVID is definitely going around. I was insulated as the new Chair of the Community Services Policy Committee for the League of California Cities for the next year, for 2024. I also attended the Trails and Landscape Committee meeting last night, that was with Amy, she facilitated that for us here in this room. It was a nice reset with the group, because there has been turnover since their last meetings, and we will have our next meeting on December 4th, I believe. Some more details to come on that, we are trying to get meetings at, meeting minutes, well, to locate them, so that we can put those on the website. We have one more seat available, I know that a gentleman asked me about that earlier, there's 11 spots, we have 10 of those, if you go online, you can find the application, fill it out, take that to City Hall, and then the committee will install you at a future, at a future meeting. So, that's the steps to do that. Last two things, I was awarded on September 9th, the NAACP Political Action Award for this year. I was not in attendance because I was out of the country, but it was an honor to receive that, and that was for the, it was as a rising star, as an elected official, speaking out to the councilman, to Vice Mayor Diaz's point about racism, antisemitism, et cetera, that's happening in our communities and being a voice for that, so I do appreciate that recognition. And then in closing, I attended on the 17th, which was Sunday morning, there was a teacher that was at Mount Diablo Elementary School, Charlotte Hollenbeck, she passed away in August, and we had a memorial service for her here, her family did. Her granddaughter grew up with my daughter, so I wanted to be sure that I attended, and if we can, Mayor, I'd like to close out tonight's meeting in her honor. She was at Mount Diablo Elementary School for over 50 years, and very instrumental, and if any of your children went there, she always played the piano for the You Look Ridiculous kindergarten play.
Oh, my God.
So, that was a, do you remember that?
Many times.
Yes. So, she, it's actually a book that was written, and then, I'm not sure if everybody knows, but she actually added on additional characters, and the kids built their costumes out of everything and put it on, and they do look ridiculous.
My son was a giraffe.
Mine was a giraffe, and the other daughter was an elephant. And so, it's super cute, and the kids all loved her, but she also, once she was done out of the classroom teaching, she would actually do the, do reading intervention for the students, so that she would pull them out and help them with their reading. So, it was very touching to see all the memorabilia that they had here in the room, and for anybody who did grow up here, there is a website that I will share with the city manager to put on ours. Her husband, I was told, we were also told, built one of the playgrounds up there, which was a pirate ship. I did not live here then, you're shaking your head, or nodding your head like you remember. And that was dismantled, I think, shortly after her husband passed away in 1997, but you can go and get a metal plate of it, like a rendering of it, that they're selling online, if you would like to have that for a keepsake. So, I'll share that with everyone later. And that's the end of my report.
What was her name?
Charlotte Hollenbeck, Mrs. Hollenbeck, yes.
I do remember, You Look Ridiculous, both my daughters. It has been a busy month, to say the least, and listening to my fellow council members, it's, I'm going to echo a lot of the same things they did, I'll run them a little quickly. I just do want to know that the CBCA meeting, Sippin Sweet knocked out of the park with their ice cream.
Yeah, oh, yes.
I mean, it was, it was just really good, they are local, they're right here in Clayton, and their ice cream rocks. One of the things that CBCA does is the Bachi Leagues, which we've been doing for six years, seven years.
For what?
The Bachi Leagues.
Since 2014.
2014?
Nine years.
Holy crud, it's been that long?
Yes.
I've been doing it since 2014? But this year, they started, they did something different, and they got out and did a cornhole league, and I was a part of that. I actually had to cut out of the mayor's conference a little bit earlier because my team was in the playoffs, so right at dinnertime, I ran out to get to my, the playoffs, myself and our public works guy, Mr. Warburton, we're also in the playoffs, and it's a, it's a different crowd, and it's everybody, it's a backyard game, and everybody plays, and it's totally, it's totally accessible to everybody, and I really appreciate for CBAC to bringing in a different crowd into our downtown, and it can only get really big and better, so thank you to their efforts. I love both concerts in the parks, and as much as I like the Alameda All-Stars, I got to give a head up to East Bay Mud, they rock it all the time, their horn section is out of control, everybody was dancing, I can imagine why you had a cash crunch, or cash crazy night that night, because everybody was feeling it. And the honor we gave to our former mayor and our promoter, Howard Geller, was fabulous, thanks for the plaque, thanks for the kind words, he deserved it, he's been an amazing member of this community, and will continue to be, I don't expect him to go away, he's definitely no wallflower, so that's not a problem there. The 9/11 remembrance service was amazing. I reached out to the fire chief to ask him to be a part of it, in conjunction with the VFW. I did not expect for the Contra Costa County Fire Protection District to say, okay, Clayton, you're it, we want to do everything there. And they enjoyed it immensely, and I invited them to come back every year, and at the same location, and I think as successful as it was in the location, and the beauty and the fountain was going in all of its glory, it was one of those things that I think that Clayton will become the destination for that 9/11 remembrance for years to come. To dovetail that on top of that to the Clayton Day of Service, which is different than Clayton Cleans Up, I mean, Clayton Cleans Up is everybody should come grab a bag and go out and clean something up. Well, we had that opportunity, there's some high schoolers who took advantage of that, but this is really project-based. So, the elementary school is a well-oiled machine, they had a very specific thing they wanted to get done, and they had a bunch of high schoolers come up and they got it done. I wanted to knock out the post office, and, because it was looking shabby as heck, because their landscape maintenance person passed, and they haven't been able to replace them, so they weren't having any work done, and for four or five months, it was just looking disheveled, and we had a crew of about six or seven or eight of us, who just worked our tukus off for four hours and got it looking like it did. Really love what they did with the library, and getting prepared for Oktoberfest, a crew went down there next to kind of care and cleaned up like nobody's business, all the stuff they took out of there and filled with the mulch. Great opportunity for next year, I'm already got ideas of how to get bigger and better and have more projects come, so it's fabulous. Our, Mr. Warburton would love to have us to do that monthly basis. No. I'm still feeling it. I did attend a Transpac meeting in Pleasant Hill on the 14th, we discussed our annual audit of our finances, and getting together with the Southwestern Transportation Committee, which is, well, Transpac is local, it's Clayton, Walnut Creek, Pleasant Hill, Concord, and Martinez. Well, southwestern area is the cities that are Lafayette, Aranda, San Ramon, Danville, and Maraga, and we're going to get together with the two different transportation committees and talk about our common goals for the coming year. I really enjoyed getting up to speed with our Do the Right Thing program with the principal, Sarah Harris, and I know that Councilmember Tillman did the same thing with Vilky Wilson at our middle school. Again, two brand-new voices, brand-new energies in our town, and I like them, and they're clearly enjoying what they're doing and the newness of their position. I know Principal Harris came from Aranda and Maraga, Alkalines, so she's happy to be here locally in Clayton, and it's awesome to have her. Lastly, three of us here, I believe, at the table are leaving tomorrow and headed off to Sacramento for three days in service of our city, to the Cal Cities Conference to become educated, and to network and to learn more about what we can bring back here, so. Oh, Jim's going too, I didn't know Jim was coming. Okay, well, four of us are going, four out of five, it's, it's a great, from my experience last year, I got a chance to meet Climate Tech before they were even brought here, and have great conversations about what they could do, and talking to Raina about it when I got back, and you can see where they are. It was, that's the type of thing I learned from some of the conversations that are had and some of the workshops that are had, and I'm looking forward to seeing what all four of us can bring back to our town. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. I'm not going to go repeat all the things, but the one thing that I did want to call out was at the mayor's conference, we had a little bit of last-minute planning changes, and I really want to recognize the staff, the staff, Amy especially. It went very smoothly because of your work, so thank you, Dana, I know that you also pitched in, and Patrick as well, so it could not have happened without your diligence, so I really appreciate that. I actually got feedback from the club staff, management afterwards, and they had similar things to share, and I wanted to give you guys that feedback, so thank you very much. You know, I had the opportunity to present an award for Officer Paul Walczek at the Knights of Columbus ceremony this weekend, that was a great event, I was there with the chief, he was the one that looked good in the picture, so that was excellent. And then, you know, the similar things, but I just want to call out that, I am going to be doing a town hall here in Hoyer at September 27th, it's a Wednesday at 6:30. So, here, when you guys ask questions, we can't really answer, but there, I take all comers, so, and that's it, so.
If you're done with yours, I have two quick items. Quick, okay. The first is, speaking of the mayor's conference, I had dinner with the first mayor the other night, 102-year-old Bob Hoyer, he's getting back in shape, he's walking around and doing very well, considering that he was in rehab for over- considering that he was in rehab for over a couple of weeks. Last thing, I don't know about the rest of you, but I have been inundated with phone calls and messages relative to the Olivia project and the lack of fencing to protect the walking public who want to go by, the tree stumps that are laying on the property that one are an eyesore and two are potential fire hazard. And last but not least, the dust that's being created, which people have to breathe in when they go by.
Okay. So then, that is, that is the end of my report. I think that's the end of all of our, our last item is adjournment. So in honor of Mrs. Hollenbeck.
Hollenbeck.
I wrote it down and it's too small for me to--
Hollenbeck.
Mrs. Hollenbeck, I would adjourn the meeting. My kids also did the show, it was amazing and that's, that's really cool. So our next meeting is October 3rd. And that is at 10:11. Thank you.